Please let's take our seats. All right, welcome to this evening's regular business meeting. We're going to have our invocation this evening by Dr. C.H. Bratty, Senior Pastor of now Faith Apostolic Ministry in Rex, Georgia. We will follow that up with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you would, please stand with me. As we pray before, we pray I give honor to God who's ahead of my life, I give honor to our Chairman, Chairman Turner, Madam Vice Chair, and to the rest of our Commissioners, Commissioner Anderson, Commissioner Franklin, and Commissioner Davis. God bless you, and to all that are here, God bless you. We're making it day by day and hour by hour by the grace of God. Let us pray. Father, we thank you for your divine intervention. We pray right now that your will be done. You prayed, Jesus. Lord, I wish that this cup passed from me. Nevertheless, not my will, but thy will be done. Tonight, we ask that your will be done. Nevertheless, not our will, but your will be done. Anoint our Commissioners, anoint this productive meeting, that there be healthy debate, and that there's an outcome that gives rise to a greater Clayton. Lord, we thank you for your divine work in our lives, in our family lives, and we believe that we will advance and move forward with a healthier Clayton. Thank you for protecting us while in this pandemic. We pray that you continue to cover us. It is in your name we pray. Amen and amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our August 16th regular business meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Do any board members have any amendments?
Madam Clerk, I'm going to ask that the item number 11, Georgia Power Easement, be removed from this agenda. Georgia Power is not ready to move forward just yet with that request. Also, I understand that we have two items that need to be further explained and corrected, Items 23 and 24. I might ask Mr. Reed to come for the Board and address that.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, and Commissioners. Item, these are corrections. Item 23 is correct, except the synopsis on that is not correct. The synopsis should be that this resolution authorizes the Board to amend the budget allocation for the Clayton Center. And so, and then also for item 24, it's, the resolution is correct, 2022-183, but that resolution should read, "Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Clayton County, Georgia Approving the Expenditure of Stimulus Funds Awarded to the County Under the American Rescue Plan Act to Authorize the Chief Financial Officer to Amend the Budget Where Necessary, to authorize the Chairman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the resolution, to provide an effective date of the resolution for other purposes." That synopsis that is for 23, it should be the synopsis for 24. So, both those items should read the same, it's just that the resolution was attached the wrong one. And then also I wanted to make one other clarification. The synopsis for number 22, the resolution adopting the milage, it should say that the milage rate is 14.496 for Clayton County M&amp;O, which is a reduction of .25 mils from the current rate, not an increase.
All right, Madam Clerk, enter that as I move for that to be entered as read by Mr. Reed.
Oh, I'm sorry. And there was one other correction. Item number... Is it 34? Yes, 34 should, is not Commissioner District 1, it's actually Commissioner District 4, Demont Davis.
Okay, I'll move for that correction as well, Madam Clerk. Any others?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Franklin.
Yes, I'd like to move Items 8, 12, number 8, I'll start there so I can read it out.
You'd like to move that where?
To the regular agenda. It's 21, RFP 21-293.
You clear on that, Madam Clerk?
I'm clear.
Okay, next.
Also, item number 12 on the agenda, which is the human resources positions. I actually wish we could just hold those, but move them to the regular agenda. Item 13 to the regular agenda, as well as item 17, which is, oh no, not 17. 17 is fine, I've already gotten my question answered, I apologize. That was my note. Thank you to COO. So it's just 8, 12, 13, that's it.
Clear, Madam Clerk. Commissioner Hamburg.
Yes, I'm not sure if we should do this in executive session or not, but number 17.
We can't hold it until after.
We had talked about some other things.
That was the clarification I asked COO. Can we hold that until after, item 17, until after the executive session then?
Okay.
Is that what you're?
Yes.
Okay.
So what are we doing with 17?
We're going to hold that until after executive session. Clear, Madam Clerk. Any others?
Yes, can we add number 9 to the regular agenda for explanation? And number... 15, because I'm not sure what we decided on. Number 15. Or just an explanation.
I think it's in the information on the back of the book. But you want to do, put that on the regular?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, 15, regular agenda. Any others? All right, hearing no others, entertain the motion to adopt the agenda.
Some of.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davis. Any questions? Those in favor, I. I oppose. Issue nanos.
Mr. Chairman, our next item is a presentation, Boys and Girls Club Briefing Update.
Yes, come to the podium, please.
Good evening. My name is Amelia Davis, and I'll be speaking and presenting on behalf of the Flint River Boys and Girls Club. We're just going to provide some updates about the wonderful season and summer that we've had at the Boys and Girls Club. But the first thing I want to do...
He can help.
Okay. So, once the goal of our mission, so we can understand why we do what we do and what our goals are at the Boys and Girls Club. So, our mission is to ignite the unlimited potential for kids and teens by creating a safe, inclusive, and engaging environment. And our mission, our mission is, yes, go ahead. Our mission is thousands of young leaders thriving in life and strengthening the future of their communities and the world. And more specifically here, we want to strengthen the communities of our Clayton County communities and our Flint River community. And so, at the Flint River Boys and Girls Club, we are known as the Flint River Otters. And otters, what that means for our little otters are, we're outstandingly talented, tremendously exceptional, and resilient. And this is what our otters and our mantra that our little people go through and our members go follow at the Flint River Boys and Girls Club, so that we can get our, those outcomes of our mission and our vision. And so, actually, my name is Amelia Davis. I am the former Executive Director at the Boys and Girls Club. Right now, we are in the middle of transitioning leadership, and our new Executive Director, Mr. Michael Maxwell, is here today. Oh, here he is. Mr. Michael Maxwell is our new Executive Director here at the Flint River Boys and Girls Club, and I will be serving as our new Regional Director here for the Flint River Boys and Girls Club. So, we're in a little transition with leadership, but we are going to continue and be as strong as ever at Flint River. So, just to highlight with our summer, so a lot of, the way that we focus on and making sure we get our outcomes of our vision or mission at the Boys and Girls Club is through exposure and experience. So, our little otters went through a lot of exposure and experience this year at summer camp. This was our second summer camp here at the Flint River Club, and we had over 115 members enrolled. We had an ADA, which is an average daily attendance of 70, towards our optimum daily attendance, which is 75. So, we did pretty good in having kids come in and building at least three to, two to three days a week, three to five days a week to engage in summer activities. And another thing that we were fully staffed at Flint River this summer, which is a huge accomplishment in being able to get staff to come in every day. So, with some of the experiences and exposure that we, that our little otters experienced this summer at Flint River was our, a part of our academic success pillar, which is academic success. We went through STEAM workshops and brain games, which is our summer learning loss program to prevent summer learning loss. So, during brain games, they, we meet three to, three to five times a week, and they do STEM activities, STEAM activities. And one of the things that we did was making slime. We know that our kids like to make slime and play with it. And so, one of the things they did, got to do this summer as experience and exposure is being able to learn the science behind making slime. In another STEM workshop, we had the mobile gym mining come to the club, and little otters were able to do some gym mining and learn about different gyms and how they contribute to the ecosystem and the world and things like that, and how, and how they're able to use those gyms and different things and such. So, the mobile diamond mining came, and they were able to mine and find all types of different crystals and things. And they, after that, they learned about each crystal, and they got to take, take those crystals home and teach their parents about what they learned. Another pillar of the Boys and Girls Club is character building and leadership. And so, we did a lot of team building activities this year. This summer, we had pot wars. So, this summer, our kids, they operate in pots. So, there was a K through first grade pot, second and third grade pot, so on and so forth, and they competed in pot wars this summer. And this picture here is showing one of the pot wars activities. What they had, each pot had to work together as a team to build their own rocket ship or spaceship, and to see who could build the best rocket ship or spaceship. And so, that's how we, those are the type of activities that we do to, to build character and leadership. And then, of course, we have our Fine Arts Program Indian Activities, which includes drama, music and arts, and this is showing the different types of trap and paint, which is an activity that the kids love to do. It's, they come and they, they learn to paint, they print different activities with music and things going on. That's trap and paint, one of the experience and exposures activities we do to expose them to different types of fine arts. And of course, on the experience side is the field trips that we, we were able to engage in this summer. So, we went pretty much all over the city of Atlanta and Clayton County this summer. We visited Fun Spot. We also visited Zoo Atlanta. With the help of some of our partners, we were able to take over 50 kids to Zoo Atlanta this, this summer for a field trip. And one of the most exciting field trips that experience came to is Camp Kiwanis. And Camp Kiwanis is a week sleepaway camp that 10 of our members got to experience this summer. We were able to take five girls and five boys to Camp Kiwanis, which is up in Danielsville, Georgia. It's owned and operated by Boys and Girls Clubs Metro Atlanta. We, basically, we dropped them off on Monday, and we come back and pick them up on Friday. And I can tell you that when the kids do go to Camp Kiwanis, they do come back changed individuals from the experiences that they gained at the sleepaway camp at Camp Kiwanis. And one of the field trips that I'm excited about is, this year, we were out of this world. Our summer camp theme was out of this world, space exploration. So, we were able to take over 85 members to Huntsville, Alabama, to visit the U.S. Space and Rocket Center this year. And so, this is just a quick little video to show you about the experience that they had at Huntsville Space Center. And they were, at this field trip, they were able to bring together all the exposure and experiences and things that they learned about space into and apply to the things that they saw at the Space Center. So, we arrived at 6:00 AM. We did not get back to the club until 10:45. We took 85 members, 10 staff, two buses, and one fabulous adventure to Huntsville, Alabama. So, at, when we got to Huntsville, we had a tour guide specifically for us that took all of us around in different groups, and so, showed us all the different things and learned about space, all of the, the space exploration that the U.S. has went on. They got to climb inside a spaceship, they got to experience what gravity or having no gravity feels like. So, it was a really, really good experience for the members at Huntsville. They also had a STEM lab, which again, they were able to apply some of the experiences and exposure at the club. And this is on the way back. They did not survive the trip. They were really sleepy on the way back. And so, with this trip, we were able to take 85 members with no, at no cost to the members and families through our gear grant from the, from, at Boys and Girls Club. So, we were able to have this trip sponsor and again, take over 85 members, staff. We were able to give them a nice meal and everything at no cost to any of the families. And of course, we have our Team Workforce and Career and College Readiness Program that again, brings into all that exposure and experience that they have throughout the club. We have our team, our team staff members during the summer, and so, they are able to learn about workforce development, work ethic, all the things about resume writing and all that. They go through an interview process to be able to get these positions, so it teaches them about those career, those things they need to know about career advancement. And they put that into action this summer when they, at the end of the summer, we had a pancake breakfast that was prepared for our members, by our team, team members. So, they were able to put all that into, get into work at the end of the summer. And I'm going to bring Bobby Dunn to talk to us about our Youth of the Year program.
Thank you, guys. My name is Bobby Dunn. I am the current Regional Director. That is not willing to give up yet to Ms. Amelia, because I do love you guys so much. You guys have made my job very easy with the activities and the engagement at this club. But I did want to talk a little bit about our Youth of the Year program. So, think about Youth of the Year. We're looking at what we talked about in our mission and our vision. So, we talk about young, young men or women giving back to their community, developing their community as they develop themselves. We talk about in our mission, igniting the fire. I get the opportunity to introduce somebody that is absolutely on fire. He is a proud member of the Flint River Boys and Girls Club, and he is your current Youth of the Year. So, he ran for Youth of the Year of Metro Atlanta last year and was the first runner-up. And he just announced that he will be running and representing you guys again this year. So, Youth of the Year in a nutshell is taking everything Ms. Amelia said, how youth are doing in school, so academics, how they're doing with their healthy lifestyles, how they're doing their character and leadership, what they're doing to give back to their community, and you take the best of the best. And we have a competition within Metro Atlanta to determine who is Metro Atlanta's number one Youth of the Year. As I said, this young man was the first runner-up for all of Metro Atlanta, and we've asked him to come tonight and just share a little bit about his experience with the Boys and Girls Club and how that has helped develop into the young man he is today. Mr. Elias?
Yes, hello. Thank you. Hello to everyone. I am great, sorry, I am very thankful for the opportunity to speak before all of you today. My life since the Youth of the Year competition has been very eventful, to say the least. I've had the pleasure at working at Camp Kiwanis this summer. I can say it was a very, it was a very helpful experience, not just for me, but also for all the kids that had the opportunity of coming through there. I feel like their, their leadership levels grew as well as my own, each weekend, every day that they came through, and I really did see a change when they left on Friday. My summer wasn't just working at Camp Kiwanis either. I also had the opportunity of interning at the Banfield Pet Hospital in Morrow this summer. I learned about it through the Boys and Girls Club, and it was very, it seemed, it sounded very interesting to me, so I decided to apply. And throughout the 15, sorry, I was part of the inaugural class, which consisted of 15 people throughout the entire United States, and I was lucky enough to be one of the few. So, I was very thankful for all of the doctors, the vet techs, and the vet assistants that allowed for me to grow and for me to learn that part of the field that, that I had not yet experienced. And it was just very beneficial, and I feel like I really grew over this summer. So, I would really like to say that I appreciate the Boys and Girls Club, and I am a very proud member of the Flint River Community Center Boys and Girls Club.
Well, no, I think you all left a couple things out. Tell them what else you do. Ms. Amelia may want to tell this part, because this is our student, y'all, here in Clayton County, about the businesses and how Banfield thought that he was already working and not a student.
Yes.
Are you ready to feel bad about yourself, because he makes you feel like I don't do it every day?
I also should probably say that I have my own lawn care business that I was also doing this summer. I would usually work on the weekends, just cutting grass especially. And most of my clients are single moms, so sometimes I would give them discounts and, you know, so I would just do it for free. So, that's another thing that I do as well.
And if you don't mind, Ms. Amelia, I'm sorry, we're going to brag on you a little bit more while your mom is here. And tell us about the experience with Banfield now. He has a job coming up as well if he wants it.
Yes, so, there were, I had an interview, and I was able to get a job throughout the school year where I could work with Banfield after school and on weekends. And I am very excited for, to see what comes next.
Wow.
If I may, just real quick, this young man is, just went into his junior year of high school.
Yes.
Through his experience with, with the vets, they thought, when he said he was a sophomore, they thought he was a second-year med student. Based on his experience, his professionalism, his knowledge of what was going on. So, he, this is an amazing young man representing this community, so just everyone should be extremely proud, because he is special.
And mom, can you stand, please?
She loves public.
Thank you for being an amazing mother in our community. Thank you. Just before you all sit down, I know you all like she's just smiling, because you know why? This was not an easy lift to even make this happen for the Boys and Girls Club. And once again, I want to thank the Board of Commissioners for taking that leap of faith. And as I said in the last meeting, this is one of the efforts that serves our entire county. And this was a cooperation with the school system so that we work closely with those principals to be able to service our students that are most in need. And you all were patient, and you came in, and you all have done an absolutely amazing job. So, for those in the audience who don't know, if you look at the district lines, when you look at Thomas Road and Flint River Road, it serves, let me get it right now, Vice Chair, it's districts 4, 2, and 3. And so, that is the coolest part about it. And you have made us so proud, Mr. Elias. It was my pleasure to be able to leave training, to come back and see you do such an amazing job. And what really tears my heart is that this is, this center is right down the road from where I think I see Chief in the back. Chief, come on up, because he sits on the Boys and Girls Club Board. Some other people were not able to make it tonight because they're away at another event with the Boys and Girls Club. But Chief is on that board along with other community members, and Chief also was involved with Chief Merkison, where we just had to clean up an area right down the road from the Boys and Girls Club, where we saw a video of people doing some things that are not acceptable in our community. So, to see this beacon of light, I just, it warms my heart, and I look forward to our continued service with you. You got big shoes to fill, young man. And Amelia did such an amazing job that my friend over here who still love Alabama, she got promoted because of Clayton. I won't say because you, because of you, but we were blessed to have you in Clayton County for the time that you were there. I can't thank you enough.
Yes, can we give him another round of applause? Thank y'all so much for coming and presenting.
The photographer?
No, he's gone. He's gone.
Did you have something else, Madam? We want to take a picture. Somebody got an iPhone. Can we have a point of privilege to take a picture, please? And everybody come down. Mr. Chair.
All y'all willing to take a picture? Come on down.
Oh, you forgot about songs. You said they changed your songs.
Now, one more time. All right, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, the next item is the approval of the consent agenda.
All right, is that motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. Any questions on any of the items? Those in favor, I. I oppose. Issue nanos.
Our next item is item number 8. This is presented by Central Services Director Carol Rogers.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioners. First item number 8 is Recommendation for the First Contract Amendment. This is for RFP 21-293, which is Grant Administrator for the American Rescue Plan Act, the ARPA Fund Small Business Grant Program. The request is to amend the current contract with MNA Law PC. They're located in Norcross, and the request is to add District 1 and 3 to their contract. They will receive the standard 6% of the total grant funds dispersed from the grant. Funding is available through the grant fund. The Department Recommendation Memo and Amendment are attached for your review and information. The request is for you to approve the recommendation, authorize the Chairman his designee to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract, and authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget accordingly.
All right, is that motion? I'll make the motion as there's a second.
Second.
Any questions?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. The question I have is, when we approved this previously, was it not approved for the entire county? I'm a little confused, because we've never had a contract that we approved that's by district. And so, that's what's confusing to me. Why wouldn't it have been the entire county? And where's the confusion then?
So, we did a multiple award for this contract, so there was another vendor that was awarded District 2 and 4. So, what occurred is that, working with our Economic Development Officer, there's some areas we need to remit with that particular vendor and the service calls. So, we're getting ready to actually move another set of money, and so, we wanted to go ahead and have a vendor in place while we work with that current vendor to make sure that they're answering the calls the way the county needs those answered.
Glad you brought that up. That's a huge concern, because what was presented to us was...
Because what was presented to us was that there were things awarded, there were awards provided to small businesses within all the districts, but yet and still, we're having issues with some of the districts.
Right, with the vendor that's in District Two and Four. So, but that first set of money has been dispersed, so there's another set of money that, that's actually coming down. And I'll have Ms. Rocker speak to that, but our concern at Central Services was there was contract issues. We did a VPE report, which is our Vendor Performance Evaluation, and they did not score, um, across the board the way we would like for them to do. So we wanted to make sure the county had no lapse of services while we remit that solution, that area.
Okay.
Commissioner Anderson?
Uh, yes, um, thank you. I have several points regarding this company, so it sounds like you all already know.
Yes, um, I was informed, and I'll let Ms. Rocker come up, I was informed by Ms. Rocker of some issues. And so we started our formal process, which is to do the evaluation.
Okay, um, and you say the funds have been dispersed?
Yes, yes, what this is, there were two vendors, uh, one, MNA Law, has districts two and four. The other vendor had districts one and three. And we thought that that would give great service to the, uh, citizens and businesses of Clayton County. Uh, and what we noticed with, uh, both, working with both vendors, uh, one was outperforming the other, which is MNA Law was outperforming the other vendor.
Which is two, excuse me, which is two.
MNA Law.
And they were outperforming?
Oh, yes, they were outperforming, and the data shows it. And so they were, uh, taking unreturned calls from districts one and three. So because their contract writ specifically, they could only, they were to serve or be paid for two and four, I reached out to Director Rogers and said, okay, can they just cover all districts? That way, there's no confusion, any business, whether they're in one, two, three, or four, can call. Um, I did receive their wrap-up summaries today from both vendors, um, on wrapping up round one, which was one point five million dollars. And so the next round starts Tuesday. It's another one point five million dollars that businesses who were not funded on the first round can apply.
Do you know of anybody that has actually received a check?
Yes, I do, yes. Um, and I'm happy to give you a list, like, in their latest report, like, for example, um, District Two, uh, total approved applications, uh, forty-four. Total denied, fifteen, seventeen, no decision. Seventy-six applications total. District Four, they approved forty-eight applications, denied forty-two. No decision on sixteen applications, and that equaled one oh six. For, they processed a total of one hundred and eighty-two applications.
Yeah, I have had, and you know of some of the problems I've had. Businesses calling me saying they have not heard anything, have they been approved or whatever? And then you would check the list, and they were approved, they still haven't heard anything, they still haven't received any checks. I received a call as late as this afternoon from a business that, uh, was asked to, you know, supply some other information and all, they sent the information in, have not heard anything, whether or not they received the information, whether or not, uh, they were approved and all. Uh, I, I'll get with you on this. And you know the young lady with the salon?
Yes.
And all, and, and I'm trying to figure out why she can't be approved in the first group instead of the last group, because she's actually on the verge of being evicted from her place of business and was really depending on this funding.
Yes, and let me just say, I did talk to that business owner multiple times, and I spoke with you about it as well.
Well, we don't have to, you know, we don't want to waste any more time. But I, I need to talk with you about that, because, um, she did provide the information. So I, I'm just saying, I, I'm just surprised that this MNA...
Was doing better than the other vendor?
Yes, because I, you can prove that by the businesses that I have approved. But I would be interested in who has received a check, so we can, we can get together after.
Well, absolutely, and I'll be giving the entire board a list of, um, how many were approved in your district, how many were denied, and we're about to start a next round, and so that will be cumulative. If you want those numbers just from round one, that's fine. Also, I've been getting calls as well, which is, I don't take lightly, because the vendors are being paid to manage this grant.
Exactly, that's my...
And so, um, when I asked them, I've gotten like at least seven or eight businesses that have heard nothing. I didn't get an email when I emailed the vendor. They emailed me the email chain of where they did send it, it went into spam or went into wherever. But I had my proof to enough to make this recommendation. So I will say that, a lot of times people say they didn't get whatever they didn't get, but the proof is in the email.
Right, okay, in the future, I would like for us to, in, instead of giving out all these percentages of a million dollars or whatever, and the businesses could be using this money. And, and, and same thing with the, uh, with the eviction, uh, monies that we've received. Instead of doing that, we need to have somebody on staff that can do this and save us all this money, because these people are giving our citizens the runaround. They are. But anyway, we, we'll, we can discuss it later, but I just want the board to, to think about this in the future, instead of giving thousands of dollars to somebody that's treating our citizens unfairly, I think. Then, uh, then we should, you know, form somebody, the finance or the, uh, what's this other group?
And this is a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant administration of, for the one point five million, so they're not getting
A hundred and fifty thousand dollars would go a long way.
To take and make the registrations.
Yes, but I'm just saying, we could save that money and give it to the businesses now. So let's just think twice about this in the future. Not just you, I mean us, please.
Okay.
Commissioner Franklin, you have something?
Yeah, I, I, yes, I do agree. Uh, so I'll start there. And I'm glad that Madam Vice Chair talked about, uh, making sure that we look at things differently. And this is one of the reasons why even the last time I didn't vote to go along with even the, uh, I think it was the African Children's Fund. Because we, we are duplicating efforts everywhere, and I said it over and over again. We created this Office of Strategic Management, which we call OPM. Um, and then we then duplicated Economic Development, which we appreciate you, but we have Economic Development Authority, and then we now brought somebody in-house. And we just can't keep contracting out everything and expecting somebody to have skin in the game and really care about our county and its business owners, when they just really want the hundred and fifty thousand dollars or whatever that fee is that they're getting. And then this is, this has become a ritual between, um, the, uh, the ARPA funding with renters, with homeowners, and now with small businesses. This is, this is not the way to go. I, I really want to see us do a, um, a balance on this. Have you looked at it, uh, Ms. Merritt, well, either through your previous service or your current, uh, who's doing auditing now? Have you all audited this process?
Um, we've audited a few of the vendors for the rental assistance.
What about this one?
No, this one's fairly near, we haven't looked at this at all.
So the board is being made, asked to make a decision about something? Well, we haven't even had somebody financial, with financial background, look at it. So I have real, real concern, and then I'm confused, because Ms. Rogers, you just said that it was the, the company dealing with two and four that you had issues with.
No, and I may have misspoken, it was one, three.
It's one and three you had issues with, okay, so thank you for that clarity, because I was so confused.
That's why I stood up, because I was like, no, it's the other vendor. Yeah.
Uh, we can hire somebody right here in this county and give them that money.
But let me, let me say this also, and definitely, there's no problem with doing an overview and looking where we can save and put more money out there into our community. But on this particular item, as Madam Vice Chair just said, somebody's about to get evicted. We need to make sure we get this money out to the citizens, so we can save those businesses. Uh, so that's what's the, that's what's imperative to me.
And also, if I may say, uh, board, that, um, our process is, once a week, the vendors send me their list of approved businesses for the grant, along with the invoice. When we submit that to accounts payable, they then cut a paper check to mail to the vendors, the vendors deposit, and then administer the check. So it is taking about three weeks, even from the time you get your approval email. Um, it can take, you know, from US Mail, and now we're getting calls this week with businesses saying, I don't get mail at my business, there's an issue with mail flow, can I pick the check up? So we're having to pivot, which this vendor's been very flexible, to either deliver or post up to issue. And so I just will say that we started this process because we all met with our in-house providers of our former three grants. And the Development Authority said, we cannot administer another grant, we don't have the capacity. And that's why we did a bid for outsourcing, um, because businesses are submitting their tax returns, and then they're no longer, they, they're not a part of our open records if they're going to a third party. So it was, that was the mindset on the outsourcing, and we just didn't have the Development Authority to administer.
Yeah, I would like to ask you this, and, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, the lady that's, uh, on the verge of being evicted.
Mm-hmm.
Why does she have to wait for the second round? Why can't she be added to this round? I mean, if it's all the same money?
Right, and, and we did end up doing that as a concession to her. But the, the reason why is she didn't return her additional document before August third, when the portal closed on the first round. And so she was in limbo. So once she submitted that document, which was on August eleventh, then, um, we went ahead and just processed her, knowing that there's funding in the second round. So she's received her email, she called to thank us, she called to apologize, uh, for being, uh, a little ornery. Uh, but as others have, when they said they never got an email...
Will she be getting the money in this pa- in this batch?
Yes, she will be getting it, uh, with this next mail out from the vendor.
No, 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 I don't mean the next round, I mean the first round.
Right, well, accounting-wise, it'll count towards the second round, but her check will be cut along with first-round people who are getting their checks mailed.
So she should be getting her check in the next few weeks.
She should be getting it within a number of days, we're actually giving her the option to pick it up. Uh, because I did speak with her about her situation.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, definitely. I mean, the goal is to give the money out and meet those deadlines that we have to have it spent by.
Commissioner Anderson?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Most of the time when, um, small busi- the Small Business Administration gives out money, they ask for a bank account. And so could we also, instead of cutting that check, because like you said, a lot of the businesses, they don't have, uh, they, you know, they don't get their mail there, they have P.O. boxes. Why can't they ask for the bank account, um, number, and then the money goes straight into the account from there?
Let, excuse me, I don't want to cut, did you finish?
Hold on, it's like, let her answer her question.
Well, I was gonna say something to that effect, uh, why can't they have an option?
Yeah, have an option.
Because everybody may not want it to go to their bank.
Yeah.
They may want the paper check. So why can't they have an option?
To let it go to their bank.
Either, either or.
Either get the paper check or let it go to the account.
Or go straight to the bank account.
When we wrote the scope of work, it was, uh, soup to nut, um, at the end, that the grant administrator would issue checks to the vendor if they set it up, whereas, I guess, ACH, we could certainly ask the vendor that.
Okay.
Um, Director Rogers and her department negotiated down to the six percent. So I don't know if that, you know, it, how much more cumbersome that is work-wise. Seems like it would be simpler, but we can certainly ask.
A hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I think we can do that.
I believe the grant administrator did say her caution with that, and I'll give you a copy of her report, because she had some recommendations of how we can make it better. She did say that the danger in ACH or our right-of-way is, once it's gone, it's gone, and it can go to the, the wrong entity. Say, there's a chance for fraud in that case. So she said it's better if you cut checks, and we cut it in the name of the business, and it's mailed to the business. So, um, we have discovered quite a bit of issues with mail of, of, like, some of our shopping plazas, they'll say, well, there's a dispute with the post office and the shopping center owner, so mail doesn't get distributed to our, and that's just ridiculous to me.
Or if they can pick them up.
Or they can pick them up.
Or they could pick it up, and, and that is certainly an option. And they would pick it up from our office, we would just have them come and post up, like, twice a week or something. But I think you'll see of the great job, and I'll be happy to have them come give you a report as well. But we'll have some businesses come and give their experience with this. Uh, she did say, you know, out of the three hundred and some odd interactions and emails that, you know, only two have come back and said, thank you, but I will say thank you for, um, you allowed the ARPA funds to be spent for small business grants. And, uh, to this date, uh, yeah, we have a hundred and forty-three that have been administered. That's one point four million dollars.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'd like to amend the motion if we can, I don't know.
Who made the motion? Madam Clerk, who made the motion?
I think you did, sir.
You made the motion.
We've been talking for an hour, so I kind of lost track.
Chairman Turner, you made the motion, and Commissioner Davis made the second.
Commissioner Franklin, what are you proposing?
I just would like to amend the motion that if, if we approve it, that it has to be approved, that the auditing department has to audit that data. There's nobody with finance looking at this information. And, uh, we need to audit the data, we get more information back from our block grants, uh, than this program. We don't even know the criterion, the criterion didn't come before the board, so we need a, a, a full audit.
Is that an ongoing audit?
During the entire process, yes.
Process of the money that's at hand.
Correct.
All right, well, I don't know.
Isn't it going to be, isn't it the process to audit it normally anyway? Since it's ARPA funding?
It has not been audited.
We have not touched everything that has been ARPA-funded, but we are trying to, we're working with OPM on some of the higher-risk areas.
But everything, at the end of the day, will be audited, though, is that correct?
We don't have the staff to audit everything, um, but it is subject to external auditing.
Okay, thank you.
All right, with that being said, I don't have a problem with that, so I will amend my motion to include an audit of the monies that was received, uh, this iteration. Uh, is there a second?
I second it, and that could include internal or external, depending on your, um, availability of staff.
Thank you for your support.
Any questions? Those in favor, I. I oppose. Is she unanimous?
Thank you for your support.
Our next item is item number nine.
Item number nine is a request to rescind a contract award. This is for our PSA twenty-two dash two oh two, which was Legal Services for a dependency hearing for the Law Office of Delisa Williams. Um, the recommendation is to amend, to rescind the award. Ms., uh, Attorney Williams notified us, um, after award, that she was unwilling to sign our contract due to, um, financial reasons for advisory, her financial advisor, in regards to being a W-nine employee. So she had concerns about being an independent contractor, and she felt like it was not in her best interest financially.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion, are there any questions?
Yes, do we have a replacement?
Um, we're working with Administrator Colin Slay at the Juvenile, and he is on the, you know, working toward getting someone to replace her.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Slay?
I think somebody, is he coming?
Yes, Mr. Slay, do you have any questions for him?
Oh, yes, who's doing that, I mean, can they perform?
Commissioner Hammer, we are actually, uh, in the process, uh, Central Services debate, a new procurement request for an additional, a, a second attorney. Um, so we're open to have that worked out pretty soon.
Okay, and they are familiar with the require, with the requirement?
They are, she actually formally was under contract with us a couple of years ago, and then, so she's coming back on board.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Those in favor, I. I oppose. Is she unanimous?
Okay, thank you. Our next item is item number twelve. This is presented by Human Resources Director Pamela Ambles.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair, and our citizens of Clayton County. Uh, LR sixty-seven sixty-three, on behalf of Human Resources, we are requesting to add Human Resources Analyst, Grade Sixteen, Step Eight, total compensation fifty-eight thousand two thirty-five, reduce the part-time budget by twenty-four thousand two sixty-four. The rationale and purpose of the request has been spelled out in the LR document. The cost of the request is thirty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion, are there any questions?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Hammer.
Uh, what's the amount of the, of the total compensation? I'm showing one amount, and you said something else.
The, the total compensation is fifty-eight two thirty-five.
Yeah, I'm showing fifty-four nine seventeen.
No, she's reducing part-time, with part-time money, so that's why we dropped it down to, I believe, to thirty-eight.
Now, say, say that again, Chair, because I think I...
Human Resources Analyst, Grade Sixteen, Step Eight, total compensation fifty-four thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars.
Thank, and that is correct, I apologize, I corrected it on the LR, but not on my notes. When we vetted this, we vetted it at the, at the, um, compensation scale for the public safety. So what you have in front of you, that is cor- So what you have in front of you, that is correct. What's in the LR document is correct. I just did not change it on my, uh, on my notes. Let me take a look at this.
So which, which is correct?
What you all have in front of you, uh, Vice Chair is correct. It's at Grade sixteen, Step eight. Uh, the total compensation is fifty-four thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars. Uh, the salary for that position is thirty-eight thousand seven thirty-two. Um, let me go on down to the, uh, what the LR document said. I just did not change my notes when we realized that, um, that the, uh, that it had been vetted at the public safety scale instead. So the budgetary impact is actually thirty-three thousand nine seventy-one. So what you all have before you and what's on the LR document is correct. I just did not correct my notes.
Well, can I give me the budgetary impact again? Let me see here, Chuck, cause I wanna make sure, cause I'm showing something different.
Actually, it's less. The budgetary impact is, uh, thirty thousand six hundred and fifty-three dollars. Yes, ma'am, it's lower than that.
That's what's in our packet. That is correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I do, um.
Commissioner Franklin.
The first question is, how many do you currently have in your division working?
How many do we currently have in HR? That's your question, Commissioner?
Yes.
We have eighteen full-time employees.
Okay. And then the second question may be for Ms. Merritt. Considering that, uh, this, we have four hundred open cases and we used funding before to do some backlog, is there any way that we can do research to see if any of the, um, uh, grant funding we've received can, can be used towards this at least up until twenty twenty-six? Because we even, we still have to twenty twenty-four to identify use of those funds. Can we just explore it?
Um, Director Ambles, is this strictly for FMLA?
Yes, yes, it is. And I have some numbers that I will share with the board. We did a process analysis, uh, the end of June to take a look at what we were currently doing. Mr. Ryan Shaw, he, uh, the Human Resources Officer, was the primary contact and administrator for FMLA. When we did our process analysis, we found that we could, that what we were doing currently was not working. In two thousand eighteen, and I wanna say this, FMLA is case management. Uh, some of our employees have been on FMLA for five, ten years depending on what the medical condition is. Some go on, go off and so forth. But this is case management that we have to start at the beginning and carry it out through the end. So in two thousand eighteen, we had three hundred and eighty-one, uh, new cases added. In two thousand nineteen, we had three hundred and forty-one. Uh, twenty, uh, it, it just kinda exploded because that was during the time with COVID. That took it up to seven hundred and eighty-six cases. Uh, twenty twenty-one, it took it up to seven hundred and eighty-four. We're, we're, I think we're making some progress. Twenty-two, as of the current date, we have added two hundred and twenty-two. FMLA, uh, the provisions of FMLA is, is very complex and it requires a lot of communication, collaboration with the various departments. Uh, there's a lot of strict deadlines that we have to make in order to be in compliance with the FMLA provisions. That doesn't include when it's intermittent FMLA. When it intermittent, that it requires extra monitoring, um, and so forth. So it's, it's more, it's just ca- ongoing case management and it was just more than one person could effectively handle.
Any other questions?
So we've grown in three years by over two hundred percent with these FMA, FLMA's from three eighteen to seven eighty-four?
I think when, in twenty twen- in, in twenty twenty, Commissioner, that was during the COVID.
Okay.
And it just exploded during that particular time as, as the numbers show, seven hundred, uh, in eighty-six. Um, I would like to say too that my eighteen full-time employees, we serve a employee population of right at two thousand, uh, six hundred. The ratio for HR is one to one hundred and we are not nowhere near that. So yes, sir, in that particular time, it just kinda exploded and in twenty twenty-one, it continued to, to kinda grow. And we have, uh, not only COVID, but we have Maki Parks and stuff like that that has come on the scene and all of those different things has have just exploded.
Any other questions? All right, those in favor, I.
Aye.
Opposed, issue unanimous.
One quick question. We voted on it, but for what specific amount do we need to restate that since?
That's stated in the book. She clar- she clarified it.
She clarified, she clarified it, uh, based on, uh, Vice Chair Hamburg's, uh, question.
Okay, but the motion was made before the clarification. That's the only reason I asked.
The numbers were the same though.
No, the, it was read a different amount and then that somebody confirmed the motion based upon the amount read and the clarification came after the motion was made.
That's correct. So, um, yes, I didn't realize it was that pattern. So yes, if there was, if the motion was made prior to, um, prior to the correction, then yes, it needs to be amended to.
Amend the motion.
All right, I'll amend the motion.
Which one was, there was one already that was correct.
Are you saying that the increase is specifically due to COVID and?
You mean with the FM, the increase in FMLA cases? It is a combination of things, Stacy. I think when, um, in twenty twenty, that was when COVID hit. In addition to that, there were some changes to the regulation that gave, that expanded, uh, FMLA to other, um, for other reasons. The provisions expanded for other reasons. So I wouldn't say specifically for COVID, but it has had a major impact on, on the cases.
But you don't, is it currently having an impact or is that pretty much resolved itself?
I think that has resolved itself and right now it's just ongoing with different things.
All right, so I'm in my motion to state the corrected numbers as stated or corrected by Ms. Ambles. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions? Those in favor, I.
Aye.
Opposed, issue unanimous.
Thank you all so much.
Mister Chairman, our next item is item number thirteen.
On behalf of the Tax Assessor's Office, Human Resources is requesting the following personnel changes. Add appraisal senior, grade twenty-five, Step thirteen. Total compensation is eighty-six thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars.
Is that the point, one Chuck? We're talking about the tax, the tax assessor? What am I adding today? Hold on one second. Y'all, hold on one minute for a minute. Let me get my bearings up here. We're not going right here yet. That's gonna be tax assessor on behalf. Okay, we're, yeah, that's deleting. And then that's, yeah, that's adding right there. So it's a little, let me hold on to this, Chuck. Um, because we're adding on the tax, we're adding. Okay, yeah, that's correct. I just wanted to make sure, cause we're adding and deleting there. Okay, I just wanted to kinda look at, at the, um, at the numbers.
For this particular request, we are adding, uh, two positions and we're also deleting two positions on behalf of the, uh, tax assessor. We're going to add an appraisal senior, grade twenty-five, Step thirteen. Total compensation is eighty-six thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars. We're gonna also add an appraisal senior, grade twenty-five, Step eight. Total compensation is eighty-one thousand five oh eight. We're deleting two positions. We're going, we're requesting to com- uh, delete the commercial appraiser three, grade twenty-two, Step twelve. Also, total compensation for that, I'm sorry, is seventy-four thousand five thirty-one. Also to delete appraisal four, grade twenty-four, Step thirteen. Total compensation is eighty-two thousand four twenty-nine. Um, make sure I have this right, my cost. Put it on the record correctly. Uh, also, I want to say that the, um, the rationale of the request has been laid out for the board in the, um, LR document. In absent of any other budgetary, uh, considerations, the total cost is ten thousand, uh, seven hundred and eighty dollars. That's correct.
All right, is there a motion? So moved. Is there a second? Second to motion, are there any questions?
Yes, I do.
Commissioner Franklin.
Uh, the first question I have is, um, how much are the appraisal managers, uh, currently making, not the position that's being asked for? The appraisal managers, uh, Commissioner? Yes, cause I think we're causing a compression issue here based upon what I've, um, looked at and reviewed.
Let me see here. Emmett, if I'm not mistaken, you already have one, um, appraisal manager on staff. Because the request, it, within the office of the, uh, tax assessor, there are three divisions. And, uh, there is already an appraisal manager in that particular division. This request would put two, two, will put one in each of the other divisions. Is that right, Emmett? Understand?
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm gonna correct that. Is, I have actually, uh, five, uh, I'm sorry, four appraiser managers.
Mm-hmm.
This appraiser senior is a step, is, uh, below that and it's gonna be assisting the appraiser managers. They're actually gonna be creating a line of succession. We've actually just had a commercial appraiser leave right in the middle of appeal season. And so that we can further train staff and get a line of succession going.
Okay. And, um, but with that, that's gonna put them so close to their managers and I still didn't get to answer to the question of how much. I wanted to know how much those, your, um, four current managers are currently making.
And I apologize, Commissioner. I, um, I underst- I misunderstood the question because we're adding the appraisal senior. We currently have one senior in that one particular division. This particular, um, the request is we would put one, um, senior for each three division. And I apologize, I don't have the, uh, grade and step for the managers. I can get that back to the board, but I don't have it to, I don't have it.
Well, with that, I'm, for me, I'm gonna ask that we amend the motion and hold it until you can get that information. Because with civil service, we, as we dealt with over and over again, you're gonna create a compression issue with creating these new positions. So we need to have that information in order to be able to evaluate it properly.
I want to say that they are at grade twenty-seven, but I don't want to put anything on record that's not true. So I'll get that back to you all.
Let's give you a minute to get that.
I think it's twenty-seven.
Commissioner Davis, how would you like to proceed with amendment of your motion? Or not?
First, let's ask, uh, Tax Commissioner, what's your thought is on this?
He's a tax assessor.
Tax assessor, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Terry Baskin gonna come get all of us.
Yeah, that's correct. I don't want, uh, Commissioner Baskin knocking on my door. Uh, the initial thought is, yes, this would put, um, some individuals as far as closer to my managers, one hundred percent right. And that is something at some point down the road, I do plan on addressing at another point. Uh, I don't have, right now, I have one appraisal senior position for three, uh, appraiser areas. And I cannot spread a person out with at that current scale. So if I have three, by giving back two of my positions, which would be somewhat leads in those areas already, that they're not being compensated for. Uh, we have one in one department that has been there for a while and handles a lot of the duties when the manager is not available and is not compensated whatsoever. So we have to start with now addressing that I've got to start training some lines of succession.
I think we need to look at this a little further to get accurate information, cause I, based upon, I, I'm glad you said about the position open, cause that's one of the things I saw. You still have positions open, you haven't filled, but you're trying to create more positions.
I'm trying to create this by moving up actually people who are actually right now currently assistant managers and not being compensated for it. Uh, that's where I'm trying to create three instead of one for each of those departments. My other departments have some form of lead. Uh, but I have only one technically lead as this appraisal senior position basically is, uh, for three departments.
Withholding this until the first meeting in September, how is this going to affect or how much is this going to push you back? Or is this gonna set you back as far as your workload goes?
Uh, s- we will always, no matter what, get our workloads accomplished however, uh, no matter what. So if we need more time on that.
Because I'm, I'm, granted, if we're gonna begin to look at and research compression issues, civil service, service issues that can come along with this. I don't wanna prolong this in you and your staff having the ability to do your work. So that's why I'm asking you.
Yes, sir. So, um, right now, our staff, uh, because of actually not just the petition, the manager that has just left, but a couple of other openings, is having to pull some, uh, double duties. Um, the quicker we can get some progress moved, yes, of course, it will speed up our, uh, ascent to get, uh, other positions filled. But, uh, you know, like I said.
Chairman, Chairman, I, I think we should just go ahead and, and move on this and, but still take into account and do the research on the, uh, compression issues and salary issues.
Commissioner.
First, I wanna clarify what I asked for the motion to be amended to, not to next board meeting, but to after executive session to give you time to get the accurate information. What we cannot do as a board is always in a crunch. Everything is always a crunch. Well, we gotta do it now. We gotta do it now. We could always go back as we've done before, make the motion and do the back pay. If your concern, as you just stated, was not, not having the people to do the work, you said the people that were doing the work weren't being compensated for said work. So if we're voting tonight, we're voting on numbers, but we don't have accurate numbers. We've had to have several things corrected this evening. So before we can make this decision, all I'm asking is, let's get the accurate information.
Commissioner, with all due respect, what, what accurate information are we missing? Now, you asked me for the managers, if I'm not mistaken, correct me if I'm wrong. You asked me for the managers' compensation. Since the managers was not a part of this particular request, I don't have their information available. But I will say the grade twenty-five that we are requesting, this, this position already exists in the compensation system. So the current senior, appraisal senior is making, is at a grade twenty-five. The only reason I don't have the managers is because that wasn't a part of this particular request, but I'll be more than happy to get that back to you. But as far as civil service and, and it, it is aligned with the one that we currently have. So we're not asking for anything for these two, that we're not asking for what's already in the system.
I'm clear on that, but the tax assessor just said, yes, it will create an issue we can deal with down the road. I think we need to understand clearly what we're dealing with. That's all I'm asking.
Well, the decision to amend the motion is on Commissioner Davis. So again.
Yes, I, I wanna continue. Go ahead and move with the vote on this.
All right, any other questions or discussion? All right, those in favor, I.
Aye.
Opposed.
Nay.
Three, uh, three two or two three, I think.
Well, and that's what I was afraid of, because I did, I was hoping you would amend the motion so we could, we could do it, but just find out the numbers first.
You still can find the numbers.
You can still find those.
And bring it back, okay.
Yes.
But according to parliamentary procedure, we have to see who can bring it back. Cause it's already been voted down. We need to discuss this later.
It can be brought back by Commissioner. So that's fine. Cause it was brought by Mr. George.
Correct, it has to be brought back by.
It can be brought back by Commissioner.
Okay, and if we're, we're going to look at the, what parity there may be between the senior and the manager, then that's gonna require us to dig down deep and try to see exactly what's going on there.
Please do. Move forward with that research.
Thank you.
Our next item is item number fifteen.
Okay.
And that is fleet maintenance. This is LR sixty-seven ninety-one. On behalf of the Office of the COO and, uh, Department of, uh, Transportation and Development, Human Resources is requesting the following per- personnel changes. We want to add Fleet Assistant Director of Administration, grade thirty, Step eight. Total compensation is a hundred and two thousand three oh six. Delete Fleet Administrator, grade twenty-seven, Step twelve. Total compensation, ninety-three thousand three sixty-two. We are requesting to add Fleet Assistant Director of Operations, grade thirty, Step three. Total compensation, ninety-six thousand six hundred and twelve dollars. And lastly, to delete Fleet Manager, grade thirty, Step three. Total comp, ninety-six, six twelve. Absent of any other budgetary considerations, the total, the cost of this request is eight thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unless unanimous.
Mister Chairman, our next item is the Board Appointment for the Board of Appeals.
All right, first Board, Board Appointment is to the Board of Appeals, Ms. Frances Solomon. Term on the Board of Appeals will expire September third, twenty-twenty-two. New term begins September third, twenty-twenty-two and expires September third, twenty-twenty-five. At-large appointment, are there any recommendations? Uh, Madam Clerk, hold that for the next meeting.
I'm clear, Mister Chair. The next items are zoning hearings. Citizens may speak for or against an item that is considered by law to be a zoning decision. And each side will have ten minutes to present its case. In the event there is more than one speaker per side, speakers must divide their time in order to complete their full presentation within a ten-minute time allotment. When the time runs out, the speaker will be expected to immediately cease speaking and to leave the podium area. Applicants or citizens speaking in favor of an item shall speak first. Applicants in zoning ordinance cases shall have the right to reserve time for rebuttal. Opponents of the zoning decision items shall have no right of rebuttal. When speaking, speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name, address, and name of any organization you represent. Abusive, profan, and derogatory language will not be permitted.
Good evening. Uh, the first case on the agenda is a request by Heck Walker, PC, um, on behalf of TDC Logistics Company to rezone fifty-four ninety and fifty-five forty-four Highway forty-two. Um, this is actually the land use map amendment, uh, from, uh, general commercial to mixed-use commercial and industrial designation. Uh, this is to allow a two-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-two-hundred-square-foot, um, property, alright, industrial building, warehouse building. This is on... This is in between old Highway forty-two and Interstate six seventy-five. It is just north of a new apartment complex that was approved by this board last year. It is across the street from, uh, the USPS, uh, location on Highway forty-two. And, uh, staff's recommendation is denial, um, because of, because this is a gateway to, and to residential locate, um, residential subdivisions down, um, south of a, south of this property on Highway forty-two.
All right, is applicant present? Would you like to reserve any minutes for a rebuttal?
Uh, yes, Mister Chairman, we'd like to reserve, uh, four minutes for rebuttal, please.
Put six minutes on the clock, please.
And if I may, before I start, uh, just, I have some handouts passed out to the board. I think might be helpful, uh, as well.
Thank you, officer.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, Mister Chairman, members of the board. Uh, my name is John Jordan. I'm with Heck Walker, Jordan, PC, uh, two oh five Corporate Center Drive, Suite B, Stockbridge, Georgia, three oh two, eight one. Um, our firm is the applicant, uh, for this item on behalf of TDC Logistics LLC, also known as Transwestern Development Company. Uh, Transwestern has been working, uh, very hard with the community and the county over the past year um, to try to marshal this, uh, project forward and, and, and get some feedback from the county and, um, provide plans for this project, uh, uh, to get to where we are today. And I'd like to, uh, uh, thank the commissioners as well as the, the community, um, for their time and the commissioner's consideration for this, um, item tonight. Uh, Transwestern is a great, uh, private development company, uh, with award-winning projects throughout the southeastern United States and elsewhere in the country. Uh, the company commits itself to being, uh, good neighbors and invested neighbors to the communities that it, it surrounds its sites. Um, and will do the same for, for this project just as well. It produces nothing but grade-A, uh, best-in-class, um, uh, facilities to attract quality businesses to its site, um, as well. Transwestern has submitted this in the following companion applications in order to bring a Class A modern, uh, logistics facility to, uh, to this property, um, which it refers to as the Clayton Technology Center. And, uh, on your handout here, you, you have, uh, uh, some renderings of what, uh, we envisioned that to look like. Um, this project is consistent with the economic development in the area. Um, I don't know if, if you had noticed on the zoning map, um, the zoning for this property is substantially industrial, especially to the north, the east, and the west, is all zoned heavy industrial. Um, we're just looking to, um, uh, not for heavy industrial, but light industrial with a CUP in order to bring this development, um, to this site. Uh, this development will be very similar to a highly successful, um, logistics center off of Battle Creek Road, um, which I believe, uh, some of the commissioners may be familiar with. Um, uh, just like that, um, successful, uh, venture, uh, this property and this development will also help raise the standard, raise the bar to a modern, uh, logistics and techno- technology center, um, for, for this county. Uh, Jack Chapman, eh, for Tran- Transwestern is the lead developer for this project. Um, and he's with us tonight, as well as our engineer, Greg Maxi, in case there's any questions. Uh, Jack's been very involved and very, um, uh, outgoing with the community and, and with, uh, the county and marshalling this project forward. And I'd like for Jack to come to the podium and, and provide a little bit more detail for the board.
Uh, Jack Chapman, Transwestern, one-four-three-zero, Dresden Drive, Atlanta, Georgia. Good evening. Thank you all for your time. Um, we're excited to bring this project forward, Clayton Technology Center. We're, we just think this location is just perfect for a modern Class A logistics center property in the county. Um, this would be Transwestern's second project in the county. I know we worked with Commissioner Davis on the Battle Creek Logistics Center project, which was a big success. We had that building fully leased in the first seven months after delivery to two blue-chip companies. So as we looked at this next opportunity, we really liked the proximity to I six seventy-five, we're one-point-two miles away. We're one mile away from the Quick Trip Truck Fueling Station. And the area, when you drive through it on forty-two, it resembles a, uh, an industrial area in need of some Class A development. So we've, uh, been working with Clayton County Economic Development. They look favorably over this project in terms of, uh, their, uh, you know, in terms of playing offense to bring more blue-chip companies to the county. About eighty percent of the county's existing, uh, inventory for space was built, uh, uh, before the year two thousand. So, you know, bringing modern space to the county right now is important. For example, right now for space that's up and available, if you need over a hundred thousand square feet, there are only two options available that have been built since two thousand and two. So we think this is a great location. It's probably one of the last, um, undeveloped parcels available in this area of the county for this type of development. And we think, uh, in terms of the site design, uh, we have an opportunity to bring, uh, over two hundred jobs to this facility. We'll have all the car parking spaces out front to resemble a Class A demeanor. As you can see from the rendering here, so all of the commercial, commercial vehicles will be in the back of the facility. Here's six seventy-five right there, so all the car, employee car parking out front. You know, we'll build it to, uh, Class A modern standards in terms of landscaping, painting, et cetera. So we're excited about the opportunity.
All right, this is a... Refinish, sir. Okay, this is a public hearing, so is there anyone here that'd like to speak in favor? Come, okay, in favor of applicant's request? Anybody in favor? All right, anybody in opposition? Come forward.
How you doing? My name's David Hopkins. I live five-five-six-four, Highway forty-two. And they're gonna be jamming right up in my bedroom. I'm re- I've been there twenty-five years. And, uh, everything's a slope. We got a creek running through. And it was denied because of the schools and the traffic. We got a two-lane road. I mean, as it is, you can't go down forty-two. I mean, that's just gonna bring more traffic in. Plus, you got two schools. And that's why it was denied last time. I don't see why it should go now.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak in opposition to? Please come forward.
I would.
Please, ma'am.
My name is London Jones, and I live in the Clayton de Cabe community. Um, I would just like to say that we have so many, many of those warehouses in our community. We have the truck stops in our community. Fumes are everywhere. We can't even walk outside of our homes without fumes hitting us in the face. It's destroying the health of our families, the children, and the people in the community. We do not need any more truck stops, warehouses in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else? All right, uh, applicant can come to the podium. We have four minutes for a rebuttal.
Uh, in response to the, uh, the comments that were made, uh, first, if you look at the existing zoning map, um, you know, the property just to the south of us is owned general business. A business is operated there. It's primarily been a business industrial area for a long time. So we feel that this rezoning request fits in with the character of the area in terms of the existing zonings on the map. And then second, um, I just, I wanna acknowledge that the Atl- the metro Atlanta office market is twenty-two percent vacant. That's really unhealthy. We've started to see signs where because of more people working from home, people who own suburban office buildings, they're having a tough time getting loan renewals from their lenders. So, you know, the modern logistics space market considers to see great growth. That market metro-wide is two-point-seven percent vacant. So companies are coming to Atlanta. They really like the Clayton County location. So again, we just think this is a favorable opportunity for commerce in the county. This project is not seeking a tax abatement. It'll bring sustainable tax revenue to District One. So we, we're excited about the opportunity.
All right, Commissioner Anderson.
Good evening. Um, I would just wanna say that at this time, I move that, um, we approve to amend the map from GC to MXI, um, on behalf of, um, Heck Walker, PC, and, and TDC Logistics. So I would like to approve it at this time.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. So it's four one, it passes.
The second part of this three-part, um, project is BOC twenty-one zero-eight dash zero-one-three-nine to rezone GB to LI for a warehouse distribution facility. The applicant, Heck Walker, PC, on behalf of TDC Lo- Logistics Company, LLC, Transwestern, is ru- is requesting a rezoning from GB, General Business District, to LI, Light and Dust District, for the construction of a new two-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-two-hundred, two-hundred-square-foot warehouse and distribu- distribution facility consisting of twenty-eight-point-six acres. The subject properties are within the Highway forty-two overlay district and located at fifty-four ninety and fifty-five fifty-four Highway forty-two, Ellendale, Georgia, three zero two nine four, which is further known as Parcells twelve seventeen one C, A zero zero one, and twelve seventeen one A, A zero zero two, near the intersection of Highway forty-two and Forest Park Row. And, uh, staff's recommendation along with Zach's recommendation is, uh, was denial.
All right, applicant.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Um, uh, this, of course, is a companion rezoning to the Flume Amendment that we just heard, and, um, the applicant...
How many minutes for a rebuttal?
Uh, I'm sorry? Oh, rebuttal, um, uh, eight minutes. Uh, we, we would just stand by our, our presentation and what we said before at the Flume.
All right, put two minutes on the clock. This is a public hearing. Anybody wanna speak in favor of? Anybody in favor? All right, let's go to ten minutes. Anybody in opposition to, like to speak? Come forward, ma'am.
I'm again here to say that our community is going to be affected negatively because of decisions that are being made tonight. These decisions are not in favor of the residents that live in District One. And I certainly hope that the Commissioner for District One will understand the importance of voting for what's positive for residents in District One. And not what may be what you call a type of political decision. Thank you.
Anybody else? Please, sir.
Yeah, I was just concerned with how it was denied the first time because of the schools and everything. Uh, what's gonna be the difference now?
Can't answer that, sir.
I mean, you still got the same problem you had then, so if you denied it then, why approve it now?
Anything else, sir? Thank you. Anybody else like to speak in opposition to? Commissioner Anderson.
Yes, I move that we approve the, uh, to rezone, um, well, that we approve the applicant's, um, Heck Walker's application to rezone from, um, GB again, I'm sorry, GB to LI. And also, um, I'm gonna make sure I've got it into allow the warehouse distribution facility at this time.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Three-two, it passes. Next.
The last item associated with this, uh, project is BOC twenty-one zero-eight dash zero-four-zero-four Condition Use Permit to allow warehouse and, and distribution facility. The applicant, Heck Walker, PC, on behalf of TDC Logistics Company LLC, Transwestern, is requesting a conditioner use permit for a new two-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-two-hundred-square-foot warehouse and distribu- distribution facility consisting of twenty-eight-point-six acres. The subject properties are within the Highway forty-two overlay district and located at fifty-four ninety and fifty-five forty-four Highway forty-two, Ellendale, Georgia, three zero two nine four, which is further known as Parcells twelve seventeen one C, A zero zero one, and twelve seventeen one A, A zero zero two, near the intersection of Highway four- Highway forty-two and the for- and Forest Park Row. Staff and Zach's recommendation was denial.
Advocate.
Uh, Mister Chairman, we'd re- reserve, uh, five minutes, uh, but we just incorporate our, our presentations from, from before into this one as well.
Thank you, sir. Public hearing, anybody you wanna speak in favor of? Anybody in favor? Anybody opposed? Anybody opposed? Did you wanna speak again, Mrs. Jones? Please come forward.
Um, it is unfortunate that I'm the only person here tonight representing the communities nearby... It is unfortunate that I'm the only person here tonight representing the communities nearby where these changes are trying to be made or will be made. But I will, I'm very persistent. I don't give up because I believe in God. And I know that with God, all things are possible. Just because someone gets into a position and they feel like they are God, that's not the case because he is the master of the universe. And I just want to say, these decisions that are being made, everybody else has denied except the Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do you have something to say? Please, please, let's curtail the clapping, please. Did you want to speak again?
Yeah, there's really nothing else to say. Just look back at the reasons why you denied it the first time before you approved.
Anybody else? Commissioner Anderson.
I move that we approve the conditional use permit to allow the warehouse and distribution facility for T D C Logistics Company.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Commissioner Davis did the vote, didn't he? Nay. Okay, three, two. It passes.
The next item on the agenda is B O C dash twenty-two oh-two dash zero-one-eight-three for conditional use permit to allow a funeral home within the G B zoning district, which is submitted by applicant Cora Leff Knight at fifteen seventy-five Commercial Court in Jonesboro. This subject property is located near the corner of Terra Boulevard and Commercial Court. This, this project has already been presented to the board and was tabled at the request of the Commissioner. If there's anything else that...
Mr. Reed, do we have the public hearing?
We already have it.
If there's already been a public hearing, then it's just a decision.
That's what I'm asking. I don't recall if we had one or not. Madam Clerk, can you help us out?
I would have to go back. We had the public hearing, and that's what he just stated. Public hearing has been had.
I believe just a vote is needed, but I would have to go back and check.
Correct. First, I want to say that thank you to the applicant for allowing us time to go back and reevaluate. I did look at this, and because of the state qualification and requirements is why it's having to come before us in this manner. So, based upon what has been recommended, that it must be zoned as in order for the actual business to operate, I do move to approve it with the one condition of that it must be in compliance with the inspection requirements of the Environmental Department, with Clayton County Health Department. But additionally, we have to add the state. And I would add the second requirement is that it is kept clean and absent of debris and any type of undue weeding or anything like that. But it looks really good.
Is applicant present? Please come forward, sir. Are you in agreeance with the conditions that Commissioner Franklin just read?
Yes, I would just have one question for rebuttal. Clayton, before we was told to go to the Health Department, and they said that they didn't, they already approved whatever issues or concerns. They said that we was in compliance.
So, that just needs to be submitted. All it's saying is that you have to remain in compliance.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
That's all.
Yes, if you've already been inspected, you're good to go. All right, that's the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Issue unanimous.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item, B O C dash twenty-two zero-three zero-one-nine-two, a conditional use permit to allow Sam's Club at seven-three-two-five Jonesboro Road to expand their fuel pump station from, fuel station from twelve pumps to twenty-four pumps. The applicant has requested that this be tabled for sixty days until October.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
That date is October eighteenth.
October eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
What is your pleasure, Commissioner Davis?
I move that we go ahead and table this until October eighteenth meeting.
All right, is there a second? Now, second to motion, or any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Issue unanimous.
The next item is a future land use map amendment, B O C twenty-two zero-four dash zero-two zero-two. The applicant Pacific Group L L C is requesting a future land use map amendment from General Commercial G C to High Density Residential H D R to construct a sixty-four unit attached townhome community consisting of fifteen point three-seven acres. The subject property is located at sixty-eight eighty-eight Mount Zion Boulevard, Morwood, Georgia, three-zero-two-six-zero, which is further known as parcel twelve-ten-eight A, C zero-zero-two. The subject property is located near the corner of Mount Zion Boulevard and Maddox Road. And this is first of two, first of two items for this project. The, this is adjacent to Low Residential and Parks and Rec zoning districts. However, it's also across the street from, from general business as well as adjacent to other general business. It is currently wooded and vacant. And staff along with Zag's recommendation is for approval.
Good evening. I have a question, and I want to speak with Attorney Reed. On this one, I wanted to ask you all, I wanted to speak further with the applicant in regards to this particular, to this particular item. And I wanted to ask them if they could hold it until we go through because I just don't want, I want, I like the concept for the townhomes, but I want a few things kind of added to it and just want to speak to them about it, and if we could hold it.
Is the applicant present? Are you opposed to, or state your name first.
No problem. Tyler McSwain. Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. For the record, thirty-five sixty-two Haber Sham, Tucker, Georgia, representing behalf of Battle Law P C. Dr. Anderson, I would hear your request, and hopefully, there's some things that we can address. But if you wish to hold this until the next B O C hearing, I believe that the applicant is happy to do that. He is not here right now, but I'm sure we can address those if possible tonight. But if we cannot, I'm full support of tabling this to the next hearing.
I would like to table it to the next hearing.
Okay.
So, we can speak to it. Yes.
Okay. And the next hearing being the...
September twentieth.
September twentieth. So, include that in your motion, Commissioner Anderson.
I move that we hold it until the, what'd you say, September twentieth meeting?
Hold on, Commissioner.
For further information.
There's two items together, so you may just want to move to table both thirty-one and thirty-two?
Yes.
Yes, that's an agreeance. Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Commissioner Anderson.
Yeah, so for thirty-one and thirty-two, let's table those and for further information into the next, into the September twentieth meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Issue unanimous. Thank you, sir.
The next item, B O C twenty-two zero-five dash zero-two zero-three conditional use permit to allow a tire shop at fifty-two-ten Highway forty-two, Street C and D. The applicant has requested a, that this be tabled to October eighteenth.
Is the applicant present?
The applicant is not present.
Okay, he notified you how?
Yes, the applicant did make this request via email.
Uh, this is Commissioner Anderson again. All right, I'm thirty-three. How you want to proceed?
For the, no, 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 that's, which one y'all that?
Thirty-three.
Oh, thirty-three. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I moved, I was looking at something else. I'm to, I'm gonna make a motion to deny.
Yes, to table it.
No, 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 they want to table.
I thought he was asking me, oh, he asked to table?
Yes.
Okay, because it's got a deny on here.
And table it for what, sixty days?
Sixty days.
That's correct, sure. Till October eighteenth.
October eighteen.
That's fine.
Make the motion.
Make the motion to table.
Make the motion to table for sixty days.
Until?
Until October eighteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Issue unanimous.
Item number thirty-four, for the record, may have already been done, but this actually within Commission District Four.
I was looking at that one. I was like, that's not, that's not my, okay, I got you. That's from Mr. Davis.
Yes, ma'am. And so, I believe this may have already been made. But again, it's the, for the record, it's Commission District Four. This is B O C dash twenty-two zero-two dash zero-one-eight-two conditional use permit to allow an automotive sales center with... The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for the operation of a new automotive sales center consisting of two-point-zero-six-seven acres of land. The subject property is located at seventy-seven-ten Terra Boulevard and is currently zoned G B, which is further known as parcel thirteen-two-zero-seven C, A zero-zero-six. This property is located near the corner of...
That's not correct.
That's not correct. This is located near corner of Terra Boulevard, South Lake Drive. It has access point on Main Street as well.
Which one is, what are we on?
It's the...
Is it thirty-four? Okay, you got, you have the district commission wrong, I believe.
Yeah.
That should be Commissioner DeMott Davis.
Yeah, we've already changed that.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yes, sir. Staff is, so, this is actually the property to the north, which is known as track one. Staff and the Zone Advisor Group are recommending approval with conditions. No disney buildings or services will be added without a new conditional use permit. No tire sales, repairs, or car washing is allowed on site. And the last condition, recommended condition is resurface the parking lot.
Is applicant present?
Hello again, Chairman and Commissioners. Tyler McSwain, Battle Law P C, thirty-five sixty-two Haber Sham, Tucker, Georgia. We're representing the client here for this request. Staff has done a great job, and you see that Zag has recommended approval with three conditions. The reason why we're here again is to allow the rezoning and also to allow use that's been there for a while since the eighties and since it was originally built. We do understand that, I'm only gonna take about five minutes, so. We do understand that anything that's on Terra Boulevard is in the overlay so that overlay has special design standards and regulations. So, what we wanted to do here is to not bring back the use and keep everything the same. We wanted to enhance the use, enhance the property in terms of aesthetics, signage, and the usability of the site. So, what we have presented to staff and Zag and also for the Board of Commissioners tonight is the updated renderings and elevations that are part of the packet. It also includes enhanced landscaping, the promise of the parking islands, trash receptacle that is basically wrapped on three sides. And also, we're adding in parking islands for the site as well to make it more aesthetically pleasing for those businesses along Terra Boulevard. So, with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. We'll be happy to accept the three conditions that have been presented before you.
All right. This is public hearing. We haven't had one, right, on this side?
That is correct. One has not been, has not occurred.
All right. Anybody would like to speak in favor of applicant's request? Anybody like to speak in favor of? Anybody in opposition to? Anybody opposed? Mr. McSwain, you want to add anything before I turn it over to the Commissioner?
No, just, well, actually, yes. I did want to add one more thing. This site does have some restrictions in regards to a flood zone or playing on the property. So, if the question comes up as though what else could have been done to this site in the meantime for this property to continue, it's very limited. So, we wanted just to keep that in mind is that we're trying to move something that can work within this original frame of operations on the site, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis.
Thank you. And you're right. It's, we have to enhance it, but we do know that that's what it was official, used for in the past. I do have two more conditions because I didn't hear anything about the sidewalks surrounding that. We definitely want sidewalks. That's a major thoroughfare with, and we've had a lot of pedestrian issues. So, we definitely have to have six-foot wide sidewalks on Terra as well as the side on North Main, which leads into a sidewalk. And also, too, with the landscape, we want to make sure that we have landscape maintenance all the way to the curb, not just up until the end of his gate, but unto the curb.
Okay. Commissioner, I can say that the sidewalks, existing sidewalks on the side only exist on the Main Street side. But if that is a condition, I can check with our client. He said he is completely okay with that condition to make sure that happens.
Okay. So, he's okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Then I move we approve this with the three conditions and with the two, and the two I stated as well. So, five conditions.
And was he in agreeance with all five? The last one was to maintain landscaping all the way to the curb.
He said yes.
All right. I'll second the motion. Are there any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Issue unanimous.
Thank you.
The next item, item number thirty-five, B O C dash twenty-two zero-five dash zero-two zero-four. The applicant Hack Walker Jordan P C requests to rezone forty-four ninety Conrad Avenue, Forest Park, Georgia, three-zero-two-nine-seven, from M X Mixed Use to L I Light Industrial to continue the operation of a truck terminal. Said property consists of plus or minus three-point-eight-six acres near the corner of Side Point Drive and Conrad Avenue and is further known as parcel thirteen-zero-two-zero C, C zero-zero-three. The, this property existing, the property's existing, the property's previous zoning was L I Light Industrial during the mid-two thousands and was designated as M X Mixed Use during an update of the official zoning map, which makes this pre-existing truck terminal non-conforming. And so, what the applicant is requesting to do is to rezone the property so that... And so what the applicant is requesting to do is, is to rezone the property so that the truck terminal will be conforming. This is also adjacent to the city of Forest Park, and the applicant is, is not planning on doing any additional, um, work to this site at this time. Um, staff's recommendation along with Zach's recommendation is approval.
Okay. How many minutes for rebuttal?
Uh, I believe four minutes should be enough for rebuttal.
All right, put six on the clock, please proceed.
Good evening, again, Mr. Commissioner, members of the board, John Jordan, Hector Walker, Jordan, two-oh-five Corporate Center Drive, Sweet B, Stockbridge, Georgia, three-oh-two-eight-one. Um, our firm is the applicant for this item as well, and, and we represent the current owners of this property, Carrie and Kevin Cranford, who are here with us as well tonight. Um, this should be the most straightforward, easiest zoning of the night, so I'll try to be brief and move the agenda along for you, but of course, I'm happy to answer any questions, as are my clients. Um, the property is currently being used by our clients for their truck terminal business, Cranford Transportation, um, and has been operating a truck, as a truck terminal for, for decades, it was a truck terminal before they purchased the property, uh, almost twenty years ago. Our client is currently operating pursuant to its grandfathered rights and is essentially just asking for, um, the zoning to be, uh, zoned back to LI, um, so they can be operating as a legal conforming use instead of a legal non-conforming use. Um, it's essentially a zoning, uh, technicality, um, the property has been used, again, uh, as a truck terminal for decades, will continue to be used for a truck terminal, and we don't anticipate, and there's no plans right now for any improvements, any additions, it, it would just continue to be used as is. Um, our clients purchased the property in two thousand and six, continued to operate it as a truck terminal, again, as staff mentioned, it was zoned LI, um, uh, at the time, um, but underwent a, I guess in the late or mid-two thousands, a comprehensive mass county-wide rezoning, which, and, and then got rezoned, caught up in that to MX. As you know, county-wide mass rezonings, they don't look at the individual properties themselves, um, and so there's need for adjustments from time to time, um, which is what we're trying to do here. Uh, our client just found out that it had been rezoned, um, back in the two thousands, uh, when it put its property up for sale, um, uh, and is trying to just, uh, make the, the, its use conform to the current code. You'll notice, I don't know if we can see the, the zoning map, um, uh, right here, but it, it is the only remaining mixed-use, um, zoning in the area. Um, uh, as far as the location, you can see it's, it's on the, on the east, and on the south is the city of Forest Park, but there are several, I believe five large warehouse distribution centers right there. Um, on the other side, it's, it's adjacent right on two-eighty-five near Hartsfield-Jackson Airport, and across, just across two-eighty-five is Clayton County, and all that property has been rezoned to LI as well, and that's what we're looking for, uh, here, too. We, um, as I mentioned, we do not anticipate any improvements, the only improvements, um, the only improvements will be used are those that are there, you'll see, um, as far as the building, there's an existing truck terminal building, it's about thirteen-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty square feet with twenty-seven truck docks, uh, there's about twenty-eight trailer parking stalls, and then there's about thirty-eight parking spaces for autos, for guests and, um, employees. Um, there's already a large, uh, tree line buffering the property from the adjacent industrial uses as, as well. Um, again, my clients have been, uh, operating, unknowingly, uh, according to their grandfathered rights, they didn't realize that it had been rezoned, and, um, anticipate this property will continue to be used for truck terminal, and just wanna, um, um, essentially marry up the code with the current and historic use of the property. Um, staff has recommended approval with no conditions, and, as has ZAG, and, and we would just respectfully request that the board approve as well.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so we have two minutes for anybody who wants to speak in favor of applicant's request, anybody who wants to speak in favor, too? Anybody in opposition? Anybody opposed? Mr. Jordan, you got any last words?
Uh, no, Mr. Jefferson.
Yeah, that kinda sound bad.
Yeah.
My apologies. All right, Commissioner Hamburg.
Uh, yes, I would like to, uh, ask staff if they know why this change was made from MX, well, from LI to MX.
The reasoning behind that change, um, is current, is unknown. This is...
Mr. Jiki. Yeah, I don't think he was around when it was made, so...
Well, let me, let me tell you why I'm asking that, because I visit the site, and I didn't see all of what you're saying, so maybe, uh, I was looking at something different, I did see a truck coming out, but I saw, um, I think, um, was, is, is that a hotel or apartment that is right, is that directly across from the quick, the new QuickTrip on Old Dixie?
Uh, on Old Dixie, I'm not sure where Old Dixie is on this, this, this right here is the large, um, I believe it's a, um, DHL, um, site right here, um, this is the subject property. Right here, it's, uh, a motel, I think, further down.
Right, okay.
Um, but, but that's about, that's about it, everything else, we got about five large warehouse distributions all around it.
Mr. Jiki.
I'm Commissioner, um, Chairman Vice and Commissioners, good evening. Um, the reason, what you're looking at is the zoning map, the reason why we believe that it could have been a map error was, A has, uh, to the east have, uh, the city of Forest Park to it, and to the west, you have a natural divide, which is the highway, and we do, we, we didn't see any reason why, in the middle of that, in that isolation, why it could be zoned in mixed use. So it was done during the conversion, during a mass rezoning, that's the reason why our zoning an, analysis read the way it was read, that's to make it before, because previous to, before the zoning was changed, it was actually for the use that they are requesting.
Okay, okay, with that being said, then I move that we approve the rezoning, uh, well, actually, BOC two-two-oh-five-dash-zero-two-zero-four, rezoned to LI for the truck terminal facility.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, Mr. Adams.
For the record, item number thirty-six is in Commission District number two, Gail Hamburg.
I was gonna say that, y'all, y'all confused me, y'all.
Um, this item is BOC dash twenty-two-zero-six dash zero-two-zero-six. The applicant Josiro Vadel, Vadelovski requests, uh, to rezone forty-one-forty-six Gilbert Road, Avanta, Georgia, three-zero-two-six-zero, from MV MUR, Mountain View Mixed Use Residential to INDP Industrial Park. Said property, said property consists of, uh, three-point-zero-seven acres near the corner of Conley Road and Gilbert Road, and is further known as parcel thirteen-zero-fourteen-C-E-zero-zero-four. This, um, the proposal is, okay, the future manager's, um, map is, is International Mixed Use Office District, um, the proposal is, is to rezone this property as part of the Victory Logistics Center, uh, Eritopla's Logistics Center, um, and this would, part of, this property is part of Building two-hundred, which is, which is the bottom piece of, of the, the master plan. Um, and this is master plan, which is overlaid on the parcel map, um, and so this, um, for Building two-hundred to be constructed, it will require another rezoning of the property directed to the north, as well as obtaining the right of way for Conley Circle from the county. Um, however, the applicant decided to, to, um, move forward with this specific rezoning, and staff and Zach's recommendation is approval.
I just, um, to give the Commissioners, or rather, remind the Commissioners what this is, this is the INDP zoning classification that was created in Mountain View. What they are essentially doing is consolidating the southern part of it, to make sure that there are, there's one property they don't own, so this rezon will put this property in their ownership and be able to, to the rest of the project. Um, as we speak, we have permitted Buildings five-hundred and Buildings one-hundred as we speak, so this process is just to consolidate the last parcel that will complete the site plan that you're looking at.
All right, applicant present. Please come forward. Would you like to save any minutes for a rebuttal, should somebody pose?
Um, five minutes.
Okay, please proceed.
Chairman Turner, Commissioners, thank you for your time this evening, you are very familiar with this project.
Please state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, my name is Brian Granath with OA Development, I am here in Joshua Stead, he is on vacation this week. Um, thank you for your time this evening, you are very familiar with this project, this is the Victory Landing Project and the Gilbert Road improvements that, that are accompanying it. We acquired these two, uh, parcels to the southern end of our site, um, they were under the, the previous zoning that was, uh, voted in a couple of years ago, and I then, um, re, rezoned the, the balance of the property, and we are just trying to have these two parcels rezoned to conform with the balance of our site.
All right.
Thank you.
Anybody here like to speak in favor of applicant's request? Anybody like to speak in favor of? Anybody in opposition, too? Anybody opposed? Sir, would you like to say any finishing words?
Uh, I just wanna reiterate again, thank you for your time and your consideration and all your assistance with this project, we have received the building permits on Vic, on Building five-hundred, which is, uh, the horizontal building on the north, and then Building one-hundred, which sits just above the subject property. The last two remaining parcels are currently owned by the City of Atlanta, and we are in discussions now to acquire those, and we'll bring that back before this, this board to, uh, rezone in the very near future.
Thank you, Commissioner Hamburg.
Totally confused.
I'm sorry.
No, not you.
Oh.
Somebody down here. Does this have anything to do with, you know, we just voted, uh, what, last month, month before, to spend all this money on Gilbert Road and?
On the road, yes.
Right, so, what's going on?
Two, two different projects. The, the, the Gilbert Road, um, arrangement is for, um, for road construction of Gilbert Road. That project here is part of, if you remember when Mountain View Overlay was created, then we had to carve out INDP as an industrial park. So the, the actual, the two projects is to improve their site, really, but that project is a separate project that our director, my tech, I might speak to the, um, to the transportation aspect of that project, but this is a separate one.
So does this have anything to do with the lawsuit that was filed?
Yes, this is all, all of this, uh, when the board, um, rezoned, uh, much of the, this, the part that's in green to INDP, the bottom two parcels were not included in that inadvertently, uh, even though there was a lot of back and forth.
Right.
Uh, to make sure that all the parcels were there, those two were not, but the whole, the design of this was to include those two, it just was, um, left out when, uh, there was previous conversations, um, with the, uh, developer at that time. So there's the, um, but the, the plan is to go down, um, uh, Gilbert, all the way to Conley, that last little section there, if that's not rezoned, basically, there won't be, they won't be able to put that building, you see where, um, where it is, they won't be able to put that there because it's not zoned INDP with the rest of the parcel.
Okay, and this is on Gilbert Road also?
That, it's, yes, it's right at the bottom, at the bottom of Gilbert Road, right at where it intersects with Conley.
Okay, um, okay, I, um, move that we accept, uh, the, what, how many parcels? I'm trying to find.
It is, uh, the only one at this time.
Excuse me.
Only, only one parcel?
Yes, ma'am, the other one will have to be brought forward again, all right, will have to be brought forward to this board at a, at a later date.
Say what?
So there, um, they own much of what's there, there's still two parcels, uh, that they do not own, once they become, once they get ownership of that, of that, 'cause obviously they can't rezone property they don't own, once they get ownership of that property, they'll come back and rezone that, so you'll see this come up again at the portion, once they get, once they, um, obtain, uh, the part that the City of Atlanta owns currently. So this, the part that was part of the lawsuit only dealt with the parcels that they owned at that time, they've had to acquire other parts, which they are now in the, of, in the process of piecing it, uh, together to ultimately get what is there in the picture.
Okay, is Ms. Rocker still here?
Who?
I'm here.
Would this affect anything, any plans?
Uh, no. No, this will not, and, um, as Director GK and I met, along with the Development Authority, uh, we went over the overlay for Mountain View, and this area that is INDP is the only corner where the industrial is allowed, everything else is zoned more for retail, mixed-use, office, and the catalytic things we said we wanted in Mountain View.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, I, um, move that we approve this request.
Sarah, second.
Second.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, Mr. Adams.
Mr. Chairman, the next three items are text amendments, Chief Staff Attorney, Charles Reed.
All right, uh, first is ordinance twenty-two-two-one-seventy-four, which is a request by the Clayton County Board of Commissioners to, uh, amend the zoning ordinance, let me actually read that actual, um, language, so it's an ordinance to amend Clayton County zoning ordinance is amended specifically, Appendix A, zoning, Article One, Section one-point-five, defined words, so it's defined the term, um, cannabid oil, well, CBD oil, to add CBD oil sales as a permitted use to Article Three, Sections three-point-one-seven, three-point-one-nine, three-point-two-one, three-point-two-three, three-point-two-five, three-point-two-six, three-point-three-one, three-point-three-six, to add three-point, I'm sorry, to add CBD oil sales as a permitted use to Article Four, Sections four-point-eight-five and four-point-nine-eight, to provide an effective date of this ordinance, to provide for appeal of conflicting ordinances, to provide for codification, to provide for severability, severability, and for other purposes, and the purpose of this is to, um, again, uh, establish those zoning districts in which CBD oil can be sold, and of course, the CBD oil, CBD oil that is allowed to be sold...
And of course, the CBD oil, CBD oil that is allowed to be sold is that, that is no more than one point one percent residual THC.
And that came from the state level, right?
That's from the state, yes.
Can we clarify, because you came out as one point one percent.
Zero point one.
Thank you.
Zero point one percent, yes. Only that is authorized by the state, by the state, yes.
All right, so this is public hearing on this request. Is there anybody here would like to speak in favor of? Anybody in favor? Anybody opposed? Any opposition? Well, come to the podium, sir.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, Unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. It seems to me here you're trying to limit personal business in this county. Now, that's like saying you can only have one liquor store only in one section of the county. You are limiting people's individual rights to operate a legitimate business. Thank you.
I think you're a little confused on that. I think.
Then correct me if where I'm wrong.
I'm about to, I hope. We are, we need to be in, in compliance with the state. And the zero point zero one is what is allowed by the state. So our stores will be able to sell that amount, not above.
So you're telling me that as long as they stay within that zero point one percent?
Zero one, don't try to.
No, zero point one.
Zero point one, yeah.
Okay.
I'm saying correctly. I may not be real smart, but I'm count. Listen, so you're telling me that anybody that wants to sell this oil, uh, CBT oil at zero point one percent can sell it anywhere in the county and not designate it to one area?
They have to have a business license.
Uh, understood, understood business license. I just want to be clear here, uh, Mr. Chairman, that you're not limiting and, and setting anybody apart not to do business if they wish to sell this product.
This does not do that. That's all I need?
Let me, uh, let me say, just so, for clarity, for, um, this, the county has obviously multiple districts, including residential. So there's nothing in our code now that states where it can be sold. Right now, if this is approved, it will be able to be sold in the M.C. Medical District, in the G.B., General Business District, U.V., Urban Village District, um, also in, uh, Light Industrial, Heavy Industrial, M.V., the various districts within that, the old, um, Old Dixie Overlay District, which includes parts of the mixed use, medical mixed use overlay district. And those are generally the areas. Um, I could give you the actual zoning codes, but that probably won't be of much help.
Thank you for that clarity, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Counselor.
Anybody else like to speak in opposition? All right, I make a motion, we approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions?
I do have one question and concern, uh, to sell the CBD oil in the light industrial and heavy industrial area where we have trucking, uh, that is coming in and out of the community. I think that could pose a dangerous problem to us. Yes, it's one tenth of one percent, but, um, I, I would have some issues with that, with those two areas.
Well, let me say that they can, not excuse, but they can buy it anywhere and still go within those districts.
Well, I prefer them, they go buy it somewhere and come back in. But to make it, um, readily available to them, I have an issue with.
Any other questions? All right, those in favor, aye. Uh, opposed. See you, Nanas.
Um, next is ordinance twenty-two-one-seventy-five, which, um, it amends Appendix A, Article ten, Section ten point one four, to establish four members of the zoning advisory group is constituting a quorum for transaction of business to provide, uh, for severability, to provide an effective date of the ordinance, and for other purposes.
All right, anybody would like to speak in favor of this request? Anybody in favor? Anybody opposed? Anybody opposed? Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
I'll second the motion. Are there any questions?
Uh, yes, I have one. So why do we have Zag recommending denial? Is that one of those meetings that I've heard about?
This actually only affects when it come to, um, text amendment. Uh, oh, I'm sorry. The, the quorum has to do with so that we not canceling meetings. We have an issue where, um, the, the current quorum, sometimes they don't meet it. And the meetings are delayed till about thirty minutes, uh, twenty minutes before they actually get a quorum. But the numbers that we are recommending at this time are the numbers that usually show up and it's within the rules that that number of, um, members came from a quorum.
How many members on this board?
Um, seven.
Any other questions?
I'm just trying to figure out why would they deny?
I guess I don't see a problem. Any other questions? Commissioner Franklin.
Yes. I, 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 I'm, I'm, I don't understand why they denied it either. However, again, I feel like we're putting a bandage on a situation. If these people aren't showing up, then we need to remove them. Simple as that. If they're not willing to serve the county, remove them. I don't think we should be having to, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with the four, but, um, we have in our, um, requirements that if anybody's missing more than two meetings, they're to be removed. And it actually states that those boards that'll be monitor, monitored by the Chair of the Board, of this Board, along with the direction of the Chair to the Clerk of, um, of the County. So, uh, I'm okay with the four because that would constitute a quorum generally anyway. I don't know, but they need to be removed. And we need to know who's not showing up.
If you recall, the last time we had a change, it was as a result that we stayed with the regulation and we removed a member that didn't show up for meetings for two consecutive times. So what happened is that we applied the rules to them. But what happened is that when it's randomly done, then you have to wait till someone missed two, uh, two consecutive meetings, so.
And it puts everybody behind.
Yes.
And if they late all the time, we need to get rid of them.
And just to clarify, the Chairman of each Board reports and sends in their, their minutes to the Clerk. And then us as a board, we review and make recommendations.
All right, sir. Any other question? Those in favor?
Who's the Chair of that Board?
Chairman Turner. That's you.
Don't even start that.
And, uh, one other question. Madam Clerk, is that Chair on time with their reports? Are they late?
Um, to my knowledge, they are not late, but I can give you a report after this meeting.
Okay, thank you.
All right, now, those in favor, aye. Aye. Oppose. It's four one, if that is. Commissioner Anderson, opposed.
Next is ordinance twenty-two-two-one-seventy-six, which is an ordinance to amend the Code of Clayton County specifically, Appendix A, Article ten, Section ten point fifteen. Hearings of the zoning ordinance to exclude board-initiated text and map amendments from the ten application limit and a number of items for consideration in any public hearing before the zoning advisory group to repeal any and all conflicting laws, ordinances, resolutions, rules, and regulations to provide for severability, provide an effective date of this ordinance, and for other purposes. And again, this text amendment is, so when this Board initiates text amendments, it's not held up because there are already ten applications before Zag when your recommended, uh, text amendments are coming to through them. So that will just not count board-initiated text amendments from that number of ten.
All right, anybody would like to speak in favor of this request? Anybody like to speak in favor? Anybody opposed? Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. Any questions?
Let me, there is a quick question on this. Okay, I, I've answered my own question because if, uh, if it's held over by this Board, then that doesn't impact what we're voting on. I got it, thank you.
All right, those in favor, aye. Aye, opposed.
Mr. Chairman, the next item is our public comment section. The Board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given two minutes, maximum time limit, to speak before the Board with a total time of twenty minutes for public comments. Please note that all comments must be limited to matters on the agenda or over matters which the governing body has jurisdiction. Speakers must maintain decorous demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon Board members, shouting and using obscene language. Please state your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone. And speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the Board.
Jamila Franklin.
Can you pass this? Greetings. Hi, I'm Professor Jamila Franklin. I was here the last time, and I'm talking about some issues that were not resolved for District Two. I'm really perplexed by Commissioner Hambrik and her advocacy for things that really don't affect us day to day in District Two. Uh, I've sent emails to her. I've called her office. Neither she nor her aide has responded even since last, the last meeting. So I'm just really perplexed, okay? Um, constant trash on Flat Shoals and Riverdale Road, which causes rodents, overgrown grass and trees, especially in our area. Some of the grass is two feet tall, broken sidewalks, which are hazardous. No community updates from Commissioner, uh, Hambrik about economic development to encourage business growth for jobs, food and housing programs for indigent and elderly residents. Missing, no community meetings in person or online. Lack of communication with the residents who are also here, who contact her office. Solutions, place overhead cameras along Flat Shoals Road, Rock Hill Drive, and Riverdale Road to catch and find trash violators. Schedule weekly trash and grass cutting schedules. Place do not litter signs on existing signposts throughout the district. Establish and provide food programs and distribution centers to feed the hungry, the indigent, and the elderly in the district. I've heard a lot of political talk here that does not directly affect people day to day. Uh, create and schedule job fairs, housing fairs, economic development, and job training programs instead of movie nights that do not address the issues of homelessness, poverty, and food scarcity in District Two. Establish and advertise monthly meetings with residents that reside in the Aspen Road, Rock Hill Drive, and Riverdale Road, Flat Shoals Communities.
Your time is up.
Okay.
Helen Jordan.
Helen Jordan, District Two, seven eighty-two Rock Shoals Court, College Park, Georgia. I am again coming to you about the situation with the dangerous sidewalks. I stated before, last, uh, two weeks ago, that my husband uses a walker, or right now, he uses a cane. It is very dangerous for him to try to exercise and walk in his community. And the sidewalks are cracked. They have come out, they have put arrow, white arrows on the sidewalks, marking something, and that's it. Nothing else has been done. This was done back in June. It, we see other things that are going on within the community, fine. I'm concerned about where we live. I'm concerned about the safety. I am concerned about being able to walk and not have to trip when I walk. And I don't use a cane. I'm sorry if I sound frustrated, but I'm frustrated because nothing is being done. And this is in District Two. I asked about no littering signs because we are constantly in the walk that we do Monday through Friday, walking around trash that people have decided to throw out. Yes, grass is being cut, trash is being left. And just a couple of days ago, yes, they, they, um, prisoners did pick up, um, the trash that was there. But it's not consistent. We need signs. The posts are already there. Just hang a sign up there that says no littering. It may deter somebody, but it's really frustrating. Thank you.
What subdivision are you in?
I am in the Pine Shoals subdivision.
Thank you, ma'am. Aretha Ensley.
Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, Aretha Ensley, Unincorporated, Hampton. And I really had not planned to speak, but just to say this. I wanted to know from you, when you decided to run, why did you run for office? Number one, I know I'm not getting an answer. Number two, but think about it. Number two, what were your vision for this county? And the reason I'm asking that, you hear these, I hear these, I don't know, requests to put in automotive this, put in this, put, and it seems like we don't think about the health of the community, the safety, because there's no infrastructure. We're talking about sidewalks, but they are, public lighting, things that really and truly count and make it good for the citizens. You seem to totally say, we got this big vision, but we don't know how to take care of it once we put it in place. It is something wrong with your decision-making. It's, I don't understand how the investors can come in and just take over, over, and we don't think about our children, the poor people, the people can't afford, uh, uh, their, their health insurance or whatever. We always talking about this and that. I just want to know, can you please, if you ever get a chance to talk to me, why can you tell us why you run for office and what's your vision for this county? You have over ninety percent of this, of the airport that sits in this Clayton County, and you, and everybody think, oh, we ain't getting nothing. What are we getting? What are we, what are the benefits for, for being, for you? If I get in your, do I go to your, your, your place and, and squat on it? Or am I gonna pay you something? You gonna ask me? I'm just gonna be free. I don't understand what's going on. Maybe you can explain that to us because it is not working very well. And I'm telling you, the county is getting worse and not better. Decision-making is awful. Thank you.
Mickey Garber.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, Unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. Public comment to date, I will speak about the upcoming request by the Office of Performance Management, of which Dr. Smith heads. Ms. Celeste Hollis Singleton is Senior Grants Analyst in this office. And their request of two hundred and two thousand dollars over a three-year period for their purchase of software called E-Civis. Little background here, the Office of Performance Management last year tracked ninety million dollars, and that was outside of the Splot program. With E-Civis software, they will have the potential to increase their tracking of grants by twenty percent with a dollar value of approximately twenty-three million dollar increase. by 20%, with a dollar value of approximately $23 million increase, which is an increase over $90 million already in play of $26,000. Caveat here, 22 grants are uploaded nationally daily. Many of you tout yourselves as business people, and as you know, with any investment, there's potential for failure, as well as great rewards. And for the risk of $202,000 over a three-year period with a potential of rewards of approximately $23 million, I as a taxpayer vote for an approval of their request. And you, Dr. Anderson, as my Commissioner, I expect you to vote for approval of this request. Y'all got in a big yahoo over the CFO tracking money on issue number eight. Their office will be able to track the performance of their...
Your time is up, sir.
Thank you.
This looks like Collette Knight. Ms. Knight? Okay, Carol Yancy.
For the record, on August the 3rd, I received a letter from the county's attorney, which in effect was to limit and silence my voice along with violating my civil rights in regards to freedom of speech and expression during public comments, emails, and virtual town hall meetings. My attorney's impending response may lead to legal actions against the county and certain members of the Board of Commissioners. I have five questions that I would like clarification to. Number one, why is it now so many orders of remissions being approved on the consent agendas over the past several months? Number two, the county ethics board has not responded to complaints I and others submitted between May and present. Why? Why is there apparent interference by certain Board of Commissioner members when open records request? If an independent audit is being conducted on county staff, why not include all the Board of Commissioner members? The last one, if point of order is under Roberts Rules of Order, why are certain Commissioners invoking parliamentary procedures that are not applicable during residents' public Crickets?
Crickets?
Okay. Thank you.
Nika Walker. How we doing on time, Madam Clerk?
We're good on time. It's only been 10 minutes, approximately. It's only approximately been 10 minutes.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Nika Foster, and I've been a resident of Clayton County since 1996 in District Two. I see the condition of my community is concerning because communities have a major impact on the health and well-being of its residents. The conditions in which we live explain in part why some Americans are healthier than others, and why health disparities exist. Here in Clayton County, obesity, diabetes, and hypertension stand out as a few important issues that disproportionately impact the members of our community. Regular exercise helps prevent and manage many health problems and concerns, including some of those that I just mentioned. Both the U.S. Surgeon General and the Clayton County Health District recommend physical activity for at least 150 minutes a week. In fact, an example is provided by the Clayton County Department of Health to meet this recommendation is to aim for moderate exercise like brisk walking or gardening. So, why? Because walking is associated with lower body mass index, controlled blood pressure, and improved quality of health. But how can we walk to improve our health when the environment does not support this activity? As previously mentioned, the grass is constantly uncut, tree limbs are often blocking the sidewalks, and there's trash all over the place. Creating change in our community is a long-term process that will ultimately be achieved by implementing small changes at a time. This takes leadership, community engagement, and consistency of effort. What this means in practice is that we need to start implementing some evidence-based strategies, such as keeping the existing sidewalks and surrounding areas free from hazards, having visible no littering signs, and keeping the grass well-maintained. So, I challenge you all to take action now and to keep our environment clean, safe, and easy to navigate. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Kentia Smith. Kentia.
Okay, so I'm the young lady that's been impacted that you were discussing on eight. I've been in business in Clayton County for 12 years. I just was impacted by the murder in the plaza at Lake Ridge. The grants situation has been kind of not good for me, and I know a couple of other business owners that have been impacted. I am facing eviction. I just think maybe you need to get the businesses involved in the process versus issuing money out that we could use for rent, whatever, because we didn't get any type of funding when COVID hit. We shut down, we haven't recovered. I know a lot of people lost their businesses. I don't want to lose my business. All my solid self-fondarity due to the murder. I don't know what's gonna happen, but the funding thing needs to be addressed. Ms. Erica, I did speak with her, I was very upset. I apologize for the way that I approached her, but I'm not apologizing for them not communicating, not returning emails. A lot of businesses that I personally gave Ms. Hambrick, they still haven't heard anything yet, and we're getting ready to go into the second round. So I would hope that you will address this. It doesn't need to be a three-week turnaround, because you're gonna lose a lot of businesses out of Clayton County. If it takes three weeks to get funding, and a lot of people are behind on rent, utilities, and they're gonna close. A lot of people are gonna close. That's all I have to say.
And I don't know if you stated your name prior to this.
I'm Kentia. You said it right. I'm Kentia Smith, and I do own TS Harris Studio in the Lake Ridge Plaza. And something needs to be done, because they are trafficking, selling dope, and murders in that plaza.
Need to talk to Chief Police, would you please?
Okay. Thank you.
Reverend Joseph Wheeler.
Excuse me, if y'all can just stand right there where you are. Not everybody come up here, but yes, that'd be fine right there. Yes, sir.
Honorable Chairman, distinguished member of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, fellow citizens, I'm Reverend Joseph Wheeler, the Vice President for the National Action Network Chapter for Henry and Clayton County. We received a complaint from the Turner family and other family members of the deceased loved ones who were buried at Bethel AME Cemetery off of West Leeds Mill Road. We've been trying to get Mr. Stevens and the others to meet with us. I'd like for you to recall Resolution 2008-214, you can write it down and look at it. Later, this board adopted a resolution giving Mr. John D. Stevens permission to reinterior those graves to Carver Garden Memorial Cemetery. And he went through all the motions. In fact, I'd like to read some of it to you. Whereas required by the law, OGC, I mean, OCGA 3672-6, Stevens MDS has implemented the Descendant Identification and Notification Plan and Documentation Results in their information package submitted with the permit. Whereas pursuant to the plan, the interment of all human remains will be at the Carver Memorial Garden, which has been established since 1951. They went through all the motions, it was signed by the Chairman, then Mr. Eldon Bell, went through all the motions. However, we've been at cemetery trying to find these graves, we have not seen these 344 remains. Now, it is a disgrace, not only to this family, but to all African-Americans, because any cemetery in this county can be done this way. The National Action Network is asking the family to file a formal police complaint against Mr. M.D. Stevens, I mean, John D. Stevens, Mike Reynolds of Brockington LLC, and the owner of Carver Garden Memorial Cemetery.
Your time is up, sir.
Thank you, but we will file a complaint, and I would like to meet with you, Mr. Chairman.
Let me ask a question.
Yes, sir.
You are familiar with, John D. Stevens no longer owns that?
No, no, sir. He still have shares in the company, his name is still on the marquee. In fact, Mr. Joe Conenhan told me that he didn't have any shares, but he didn't know that. I talked to Mr. John D. Stevens prior to talking to him, who volunteered to me that he has shares in the company. And he also said that he contracted the work to reinterior those graves to someone else. He referred me to Mike Reynolds. Mike Reynolds and I went back and forth. He said he was trying to clean off the graves so we could see them. That was three months, four months ago. We still have not seen any of those graves. And we will not rest until this family is made whole.
Thank you, sir. Christopher Brown.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This needs to be our last?
This is the last one.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Good evening, my name is Christopher Brown. That's my family as well. I'm here with Reverend Wheeler. And before I state my reason for being, for this appearance, let me take a moment to say rest in peace to my ancestors whose remains were legally removed from what was supposed to be their final resting place. Now, again, this is my family, and we are descendants of some of the individuals who were buried in a cemetery in a location formerly known as Union Bethel Cemetery, located on Leeds Mill Road here in Clayton County. Now, those were the remains of former slaves who had to fight every day for a modicum of dignity while making a life for themselves and their families in this country as far back as the 1870s. Thus, the purpose of my appearance here this evening is to put on public record the fact that the remains of 344 of my ancestors from that cemetery are unaccounted for, and the family and I need answers. Years ago, the Clayton County Board of Commissioners adopted a Resolution 2008-214. This resolution allowed a company by the name of John Stevens M.D., owned by John Stevens and others, to assume control of the land on which the church and adjoining cemetery was situated, with little to no regard for people who had been laid to rest there. Stevens Industries wanted the minerals on their land and successfully schemed to get them by any means necessary, even if that meant desecrating a centuries-old cemetery. Now, to placate the family in 2009, company owner Mr. John Stevens promised that he was going to move the graves and reinterior the bodies at Carver Memorial Cemetery. To this day, that still has yet to occur. To represent the remains of those 344 human beings, since a bench and a marker, but that will not suffice. There were over 150 years of history and 344 human remains completely eradicated because deep-pocketed capitalists and shady politicians seemingly colluded to illegally seize control of the land from disenfranchised African-Americans. Now, as a taxpaying, law-abiding, American citizen who honorably served in the United States Navy, and I'm a descendant of those people, I'm well within my right to ask the question of where are the remains of my ancestors?
Sir, your time is up.
Thank you. If you have a reading.
All right, that concludes public comment. Is there a need for executive session?
There is.
Yes, on real estate, litigation, and personnel.
Is our motion go to executive session for litigation, real estate, and personnel?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Those in favor, aye. Aye, opposed. It's unanimous. All right, motion to reconvene. So moved. Second, those in favor, aye? Aye. Opposed. It's unanimous. Mr. Reed?
While they're talking, I'll go ahead.
Exactly. You only had the one item, right?
That's correct. This is a requesting approval to have the county resolve a case, or actually a claim, a property claim, by Amy DeJesus. The accident was on May 19th, 2021, located Highway 85 and Valley Hill Road, where she ran into a traffic signal, and she was willing to pay $46,270.42 for the repair of that, and requesting that you would give me the authority to sign the settlement paperwork, as well as authorize the chief financial officer the ability to amend the budget to reflect the appropriate revenue source and expense.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye? Aye. Opposed. It's unanimous. Ms. Ambles.
All right, good evening again, Board. On behalf of the Office of the Chief Operating Officer, Dietrich Stanford, we are requesting to appoint Chief Landry Murkison as interim Chief of Staff. Requested compensation is 5% of his current salary. His current salary is $198,324. The proposed salary is $208,240. The cost is $9,916.
Is there a motion? So moved. Is there a second?
Did we say it's a temporary position?
Yes, ma'am, interim.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hambrick. Are there any questions? Those in favor, aye? Aye. Opposed. It's unanimous. Next.
On behalf of the Office of the Solicitor General, Human Resources is requesting a step increase for victim services supervisor Ms. Tamika Williams. Current total compensation is grade 21, step 3, $64,057. The proposed total compensation is grade 21, step 16, $74,531. Total cost of the request is $9,956. However, funding is available in the solicitor's current budget.
Is there a motion? So moved. Second. Second by who was that?
Felicia Franklin.
Felicia Franklin, Commissioner Felicia Franklin. Any questions? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And the last, I'm sorry, Chairman.
Unanimous. Go ahead.
The last request that we have is to provide a 10% compensation increase to senior center manager, managers, Wanda McDowell, she's at Griswold, Joy Walton, she's at Frank Bailey, and Kendra Shepherd, she's at Sana Singleton Gregory Senior Center. The step increase, the step increases 10%, which increases their compensation by eight steps, and it is as follows. Wanda, Ms. Wanda McDowell, she is currently 2114, at a salary of $53,497. That will put her at 2122, which is $59,087. Ms. Joy Walton, she is currently 216, $49,655. That will take her to 2114, $53,497. Ms. Kendra Shepherd is at 2112, which is $52,184. That will take her to 2120, which is $57,637. We had to make some last-minute calculations, so I'm speaking to salary. The total salary cost is $14,855. We are estimating that the total cost for benefits will add another 7.5% on that, which is a total of $1,116.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Any questions?
Well, I have a question, but I'll ask it later.
So you have no question?
I have a question. I just don't want to ask. You said you had to go home.
Those in favor, aye? Opposed. It's unanimous.
Thank you. No, we had the other one that we hailed, that was 17, is in conjunction with that.
Oh, yeah, we have to do one other.
Because it's everybody. Did we miss anybody, Mr. COO?
Was that covered, 17, was?
The only thing we need to do is 17 now.
Yeah. I thought that was the tax assessor, where we were concerned about the... I thought that was the tax assessor where we were concerned about the...
Do we, can I make the motion?
No, you have to have it read.
No, I can read it. I can pull it up. That's what I'm asking.
That's all right. The HR director's gonna do so.
Okay, hold on one second.
Do you have it there, Ms. Ambles?
I do. I thought we called that one.
Just go ahead and read it to the board for the matter of the...
Let me get it here.
And the record.
Okay. I referred to, I have in my notes that it was approved. This is LR 6798. Now, if I'm missing something, let me know, but Human Resources is requesting the following personnel changes for senior services. We wanted to delete the senior center manager at Flint River Community Center, Grade 21 Step 5. Total compensation is $66,400. We want to add the cultural arts administrator, Grade 26 Step 1. Total compensation would be $78,810. And the rationale and purpose of the request was spelled out on the LR. The cost of this request is $12,806.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous.
The only thing that we need to make a statement on is that we took care of everybody, and that's what I was asking you. And then on top of it, we are going to delete a $50,000 contract position, which would give us additional funding to do it across the board.
All right, motion to adjourn. So moved. Second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous. Good night.